Good. Excuse me. Good morning. I'd like to call the Municipal District of Tabor, December 2nd, 2025, Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. As per last council meeting, there was a request to have Committee of the Whole recorded and live. This meeting will be recorded and live and will continue on. So council, we'll use your mics to speak and then once it's the delegation, it'll be the same. You'll just hit the mic and it'll stay on red and then you can speak. We have an agenda in front of us. Does anyone have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept the agenda.
I can accept the agenda as presented.
Any questions? Those in favor. The agenda is carried. Declarations of conflict. Okay, seeing none. Confirmation of minutes for November 24th.
I can move those.
Thank you. Lane moves the November 24, 2025 meeting minutes. Any questions? Those in favor. They're approved. Next on our agenda is the Old Man Leaseholders Association. I have Daryl Johnson. So, Daryl, when you come up, if you want to introduce whoever is speaking, that would be great. And we do have a couple of new counselors. So while you guys are getting yourselves oriented, we'll do a round table of our council. So Ernie, we'll start with you. Well, I'll start with Murray next time, but you have to use your mic.
Thank you. Ernie Peters, Division 5, Hazeria, counselor.
David Torrey, Division 3, Grassy Lake, counselor.
Martin Condor, Division 7, Vauxhall area.
Tamara Mianega, Division 4, Tabor, north of the Old Man River.
John Trucato, Division 2, which is south of Tabor.
Lane Johnson, Division 1, west of Tabor.
Murray Reynolds, Division 6, in Chen area.
Arliss Croft, CAO with the administrative team.
Thank you. All right, we will turn it over to the delegation. If you need to move chairs, go ahead. Do whatever you need.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Daryl Johnson. I'm from Vauxhall. I have with me Henry Tolzma and Kim Davis. And we'd just like to thank you guys for this time this morning, wherever you can present. We sent ahead a few attachments there. Hopefully you've had time to look at them. We want to be here this morning to represent community members, farmers, ranchers, from this area who have invested in these leases and who have taken pride in their leases, whether they be cultivation leases, whether they be grass leases, over many, many years. To provide a little bit of history for the new counselors. In 2023, the MD, they had hired a company called Integrity Land. That land, that company has since been purchased by Vertex, but they contracted this company to work on this project of the land management. The representative for that company was a gentleman named Gary Richardson. He's a well-known land agent. I've done work with him in the past. And he came to council and he presented in the fall of 2023 about the land management project. He had a chart that he brought to them, a Gantt chart. And this Gantt chart had a very good layout. It had time for public consultations, time for town halls, and it also had stakeholder consultations. So he had allotted 16 days in there for stakeholder consultations. Some leaseholders were contacted in 2024 in regards to this. That phone calls and meetings would be coming with Gary Richardson. Somehow these consultations fell through the cracks and we didn't get, we didn't get those opportunities to meet with him, to dialogue. And saying that, we've kind of been frustrated because we haven't had an opportunity to meet and just dialogue with council in an open way as leaseholders. So we're here today to try to start that process. To speak to the attachments a little bit, we want to go into that a little bit. So Attachment E got labeled, MD 2007 letter to SRD. So a little bit of history surrounding that letter of Attachment E. When the MD requested the lands back in the early 2000s, they had to meet certain requirements. And there was meetings held with the MD and with Ted Morton. Ted Morton was the minister at that time of SRD. SRD is no more, but it's divided up into a couple of different ministries. In saying that, the condition of the grasslands was to remain as it was, as grass. So when you look at that document, Ted had come down here and met with the MD. And once they could come to an agreement that the grassland would stay as grassland, then the order to council went forward and the MD sent this letter up to the SRD, agreeing that this condition would be held and assuring the province and the leaseholders that the lands would be protected in the future. Then if you take a look at, it got labeled Attachment I, 2011 MD tax recovery. So this is a few years later from the meetings with Ted Morton, of course. But this is when the terms came out of how the leases would be handled in the future. Terms of leasehold rights, terms of first right of refusal, ability to assign leases, ability to sell your leasehold rights, and the ability to purchase the lands at appraised values. So the leaseholders all went ahead and they were fine with this. They signed their contracts knowing that this was a standard. These were the terms. And they made business decisions. They, decisions. They got mortgages, they purchased leasehold rights, they purchased leases, and they went ahead with their businesses. More or less, this is the same how leases work with the province. So in the province, there's, of course, many leases and the province has the deed and the leasing has a leasehold right. This ensures that the land and the infrastructure and everything's taken care of properly. It isn't abused. It's always taken care of because there's a big investment that you have in getting the right to lease the land. Good management practices and good grass management, good cultivated management have been present in the MD. If you go around and look at these lands, you'll be able to see that. It's very apparent that people take pride in these lands. So in saying that, leaseholders knew when 2026 came about that the rates would be updated, of course, because that's how it works. Every 10 years, the lease rates get updated. The leaseholders were never really in the mindset that leasehold rights would be removed and that we'd be looking at a contract or a situation that we're looking at right now. Henry's going to speak now to Attachment F and Attachment G. These are, these we would request to just discuss in closed session, if that's possible. Reeve?
I'm going to defer to Arlis to determine if this meets the criteria for the new closed session. Because we could speak to it, but maybe not open it.
Yeah, the attachments are referenced and provided to council. Not open to the public, based on the ATI section of third-party business interest. So it's up to council whether you go in closed session. If you do, I would just cite that reference.
Council, what do you want to do? I mean, that's been one of the things. When I look at these leases, these are just leases that are available to the public already in general form. Is there something specific that you don't want discussed? I just, I want to make sure that we follow the right protocol.
Yeah, just in regards to, it's a contract made with the company and you can't just go and pull those up online, right? Everybody's, everybody's contracts are basically privy to their business.
I'll just defer to Arlis. What can, like when we see those contracts, those are ones each lease contract is separate. Just our general leases are available, not the signed ones?
We have the templates that are available on the website.
Okay.
There's been, there's been, like historically, or at least recent, recently historically, there's been quite a few lease agreements that have been published through council agendas and whatnot, but it is an exclusion as per the
Sure.
our, the Access Information Act.
Yeah, I can live with that then. So we'll just, so I'm just going to read it in. Okay, so close, and then council will vote on it. Closed session pursuant to Section 197 Sub 2 of the MGA and Section is it Section 21 and 23?
It would be 23.
Yeah, Section 23 of
Sorry, Section 20.
Okay, Section 20 of the ATI in respect of third-party business references. So a motion to go into closed?
I can motion that we go into closed.
Okay. Any questions? Counsel, John?
I will be posing this as the templates and these leases have been available to the public in the form that they're in without, with the deletion of the name that's on them. So I would assume that only Vauxhall grazing will be remaining in the room, since these are specific to them.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to go into closed session. Normal practice is that whatever the item is related to, those are the people who stay in the room. So, yes.
I'd like a recorded vote.
Certainly. Okay, any other comments or questions of going into closed session? I would leave it up to you, Daryl, to identify who is a member of Vauxhall Grazing Association and who should stay or who should go. Because you're the chair of the association, correct?
I'm the vice president.
Vice president, okay.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Yeah, no, we're good.
Okay. All right. Those in favor of going into closed? Those opposed? You're good, Lace. That will move into closed at 9:13. Okay, a motion to come out of closed?
I can motion to come under closed session.
Murray, any questions? Those in favor. So at 9:23. That's carried. So we'll just continue on then with your presentation.
Okay, hopefully this works. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of cultivation leases. I don't hold, Lynn, but that was important to represent cultivation leases here. And so we were looking at the terms that are currently in place on the current template. And we just asked to extend termination notices to a full crop year. One of the problems we're seeing is just the short tenure, which land can be reassigned for a different use or sold. And then there's no provisions for compensation. So somebody has crop in, they have inputs in. It'd be really difficult if there wasn't compensation. And then the other, kind of along the same lines, if we have oil and gas activities or any third-party activities, it's allowed, but there's no provision in there that the tenants made whole for any damage done to their production. And then I think, you know, going back to what's similar to the the grazing leases, it's just the ask for assignment. This has the same parameters as that is, you know, there was previously sold the rights. Lots of this land has been in families for a long time. And businesses have built upon it, especially the smaller operations. So just asking for an assignment provision back in, the leaseholder right provisions back in. And then fair compensation for any loss if a term, a lease is terminated early. And I can go into detail on the specific sections, et cetera, but I think that's a high level for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we didn't print out a little bit of information for you guys to have, so I'll just hand it out to you and then we just kind of run through that.
Do you have a copy?
Yes.
For our admin? And if not, we can get one. Thank you.
So we just tried to break down some of the main topics and and as Counselor Johnson was requesting there to keep it more to this format. Leasehold rights, so we already spoke to this and we have those attachments that speak to this ability to assign to family related farming entities or via private sale. This has always been able to be a source of revenue for the MD on transfers. And it could continue to be that. The question we would ask you guys and if you're a leaseholder or if you can put yourself in a position of a leaseholder, what purpose does it serve the MD to remove that ability for leaseholders to buy and sell their leasehold right? We feel this equity serves a lot of purposes. It protects and maintains and improves the land. And it allows leaseholders to obtain mortgages to do this and build businesses in the communities of the MD of Tabor. And the second point there, allow for land purchases at an appraised fair market value to the leaseholder. This has been done in a lot of the surrounding communities, County of Warner, County of Vulcan. They've allowed leaseholders to purchase their leases at appraised fair market values. Of course, this would create, again, revenue for the MD. And what the what the council would deem to do with that revenue, of course, would be up to them, but maybe that can be invested in the interest used in the future for MD projects going forward. Specific to grazing leases, running the rental rate. We would, we would propose you define a calculated rental rate for the lease contracts based upon the provincial government rate. The provincial government rate, it changes yearly. I just put a few years of data there for you guys. This rate has been developed by the provincial government, by industry, by leaseholders together. And it was put in place a few years back now, but it's under the Public Lands Modernization Act. And it just determines how rents are calculated and how dispositions are handled and how people pay for those. We realize the MD is providing the opportunity for the grass and that we can lease it. As leaseholders, we provide all the infrastructure needed to make that land leasable and and have built that up over many years. So we just broke down a few of the leaseholder costs there for you guys to to look at when you, when you, when you have time. And specifically, I just wanted to highlight the fencing investment alone. We took a section of land and required four miles of fence to put on that land. Going rate pretty much now of ninety-five hundred per mile, so you have a thirty-eight thousand dollar investment. Carrying capacity for that section of land would be a hundred and forty AUMs. That's, we're kind of using the MD's thirty-five AUM per quarter as as an average. You divide that cost out and once you get down to your per AUM cost, your per AUM cost is nine dollars and four cents per year to the leasing for his fencing investments. So we're just trying to show the costs that leases have taken on and that leases will continue to take on in the future. The third point there, ten-year terms, renewals based on stewardship performance. This will provide stability as it has in the past. It allows businesses to make plans, look forward into the future and hopefully succeed with their businesses. We feel if the locals, of course, are being able to have businesses and succeed, that the MD as a whole will succeed and grow. Shorter terms, tendering policies for this grass is detrimental. Overgrazing will occur. Fencing and watering systems will just be left. People won't want to maintain them because if you're on a short-term lease, you're just there for a short time. Kim spoke to cultivation leases and those those points there. The next couple pages are for your information as well. We're not going to go through them, but it's just information for you guys to to have. We're willing to take any questions. Comments or from council.
Thank you, Lane.
So coming back to the policy itself, one of the specific concerns is the fact that there is no provision in the policy for assignment of rights.
Correct. Leasehold rights is a big, is probably the number one thing, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And that applies to both the grazing lands and cultivation lands policies where the right to assign has been removed in a policy as a stance.
Right, so in in the, as far as I know, in the cultivation policy, you always had the right to assign. In in the grazing lease policies, specifically tax recovery policies, you had the ability to assign or sell via via private sale.
Okay.
Yep.
So that is the main concern, then is there other specific concerns in the policies themselves beyond the loss of the ability to assign the leases?
Yes, another, another thing that's been brought up through all the town hall meetings and was agreed on but never processed was the fact that we would like to see that to be able to bid on lands or deal with lands that you need to be an MD resident. So we're not dealing with Manulife or large corporations that that could beat out all of all our small farms and another issue is the oil revenue. It's we're, we're down to, out of the fifteen hundred, we're down to four hundred, the MD pays us. Our cost alone to deal with issues like fires and and cattle guards and broken fences from oil companies that just walk away and hunters and everything else. We pay Darryl monthly and our, our cost is roughly about two thousand dollars a month to to deal with this, so. I don't know, maybe four hundred a person could come down on that a little bit, but I feel that we still need to be able to get something out of there to deal with these issues that we have. And we've had oil companies contact us actually and mention to us, they want to know how this turns out because they feel that part of what they pay out is supposed to go to leaseholders and they feel that if the leaseholders aren't getting it, that they won't be paying it out anymore. So you're that's another issue in itself, but I feel that we have a right to some of that, just to try and maintain what we have to deal with on a daily basis there.
So I just need to clarify in my mind the issue of assignment of lease rights. The way the leases are structured now, there isn't an automatic renewal clause that extends in perpetuity. If your concern is that you need the right to assign the lease rights, if you're wanting to assign the lease and there's only one year left on the lease, then that's all you're able to assign. So just clarify in my mind, if that's the intent or if you're looking as well at the need to have automatic renewal clauses in the lease as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a very important question, of course. As stewards of the land and as holders of provincial leases, ten-year renewals are are automatic. That is, as long as you're stewarding the land and taking care of it, that is how those contracts have always worked. And and as one of our points in here, our last point, ten-year terms and renewals based on stewardship, that's what we would be looking for. Had Counselor Harris had made a motion there in the September meeting when we were here to work towards that effect where ten-year renewals ongoing were to be part of the lease contract that was specific to the community grazing leases. That was his motion and amendment to to the contract at that time. So the wording of the one that we see right now online doesn't quite exactly match the intent of that motion, I don't think. But ten-year renewal for sure with an ongoing renewal would be what we're looking for. If you go back into that 2011 document, that's pretty much what it talks about. First rate of refusal on renewals and it would be ten years. That's what you'd always be looking at.
Other questions from council? I have, go ahead.
Is there a question about how the or a comment on how the the price of the leases is going to be negotiated going forward? I mean, obviously you have it shown here, but the way it's written now, it would be tendered, right? The way they currently are?
In in the current form, the rate is at twenty-six-ten, I believe. And then it has provisions for that rate to change, I think, three times during the contract. During the ten-year contract based on council's decision. So it's not on a tendered rate, but it's on what council decides the rate would be. Does that answer your question?
Is that, is that a problem?
In in regards to planning and looking forward in your business to be every three years waiting for council to give you a decision on what your cost is going to be, could be a problem. So we're just asking you guys to look at defining the rate based on how the province goes, just based on a formula, so that as a business person, you can know what your rate is going to be. And you can plan ahead for that.
Yeah, and the, the current rate right now is at fourteen AUM and the council's decision back then was at twenty-six, whatever it was, but so if the fourteen's unacceptable, like we could look at a rate that would get, get it, like, let's say if you doubled our, the fourteen, it would be about where you guys are sitting even a little higher, but we were just really looking for that stability to just just to know where you're at when you're, when you're making financial decisions. And who knows, if we go on this four and eight, whatever, who who knows what council's here four years from now and then we're dealing with this again and again and again, it just never ends, it's so that that is definitely a concern.
Well, I, I'll go back actually to talk to Lane, your question about stability in the the ten-year terms. The transitional leases are are much shorter. So it's very different, I would say, from what's being put out there for the grazing associations, which makes it even more difficult for those folks to be able to plan ahead. So there was a set of leases presented to the community, the legacy grazing leases. I think they're a better, at least starting point. Because they did have different terms set forth, so I would maybe make a recommendation to council to go back to that and and take a look at those leases, what were presented at the time. The community, of course, always had questions, but I think those were largely more accepted by the community.
Stability. So it's set for three years, would it be more stable for MD and for everybody to have something that we had a minimum and a maximum and it floated based on cattle price? So you had a minimum and couldn't drop below, so MD knew for sure how much they were getting. And a maximum, so the cattle guys know what they had to pay, but cattle is going up, we can automatically increase it some, but if cattle goes down, it can automatically go down, but there's a guarantee of a minimum and a maximum, but it can float and we don't have to discuss it every three years. It'd be, to me, it'd be more economic sense for everybody. We have a minimum, a maximum and a somewhere in the middle that just floats based on price.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of what we're trying to get to is is something that's calculated, so if you want to work on, work on following the provincial rate and then having whatever your guys' rate is, but if you calculate it off that rate, that rate follows the cattle market. So the last page in that, in the handouts here, we did, if you go to that last page, that shows the how the rate is calculated actually, and it's based on if you're in the situation where you're grazing yearlings, that's how they have calculated out, so for sure, we'd be, we would definitely be willing to look at something like that, it would be great.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So Lane asked about assignment, so that's the thing you're looking for is to be able to have assignment to family members because in the community pastures in the lease, we understood that would just be the community pasture members, that would be looked at differently.
Yeah, for for the associations, of course, it's a different situation, yeah.
Okay, because we worked pretty hard and as much as it was Counselor Harris's motion, it it didn't come from, you know, he knew he had the support from council and it was unanimous. So we, we felt that we had really worked hard on that. So then one of the, on your second paragraph, it says the ability of leaseholders to buy and sell the leasehold right. So you want to still be able to, based on this paragraph, buy and sell MD of Tabor lands that you currently have the right to lease?
Yeah, I think all leaseholders would be definitely in favor of that. Then you can, you can add, you can make changes, you can, you're flexible, right? If if leases come available, you may want to add something closer to where your leases are. Move something else off to other leaseholders.
So I'm going to ask administration, how much transfer fee when a leaseholder buys and sells the right to lease, which wouldn't exist in the policy that we have approved, in the current policy, how much money does the MD receive when a leaseholder chooses or has the ability to sell the lease, the right to lease?
In the current tax recovery leases, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, the assignment fee is a hundred and fifty dollars per AUM, which equates to about fifty-two hundred dollars per quarter, back to the MD.
So fifty-two hundred dollars per quarter when you have the ability to sell MD of Tabor leases? And Kate, that's, that's good. And then my other question is just let me find it. And the assignment, who do you want to be able to assign it to?
So basically the same as it has been in the past, family, of course.
Okay.
Those leases, they all were able to assign and and pass them down in their family that way. And then, and then, of course, if it's, if it's in the other situation where you're going to be a private sale MD residence.
Okay, and then
To talk, to speak to the transfer fee, of course, we, we realize maybe council feels that 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 number is not applicable at this time. If council wants to look at at a different rate or a different amount for a transfer fee, of course, take a look, right? There's, there's lots of different ways that that could be, could be looked at for what your transfer fees were on, on, on sales of leasehold rights.
And on your front page, so you are interested, allow land purchases at an appraised fair market value to the leaseholder?
Yeah, that's been a common theme from leaseholders, that they would be interested in purchasing their leases, whether that's grass or cultivated. And to have that ability for leaseholders to, if they're in that situation where they want to go ahead and and try to buy that land, have it appraised and 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 give them an opportunity that they could do that. That was also part of the the 2011 document where they, that was, but it, it's, people have never been able to purchase them yet, but yeah, there's, there's big interest in purchasing them, for sure, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? I'll give you the floor for closing remarks and then we'll continue on with our agenda. I'll give you the floor for closing remarks and then we'll continue on with our agenda.
Yeah, we just appreciate the chance to be here today and dialogue with council and uh we're very willing to to meet with you guys at any point. And yeah, thank thank you for your thank you for your time here today.
Thank you for taking the time to come. Okay. And you're welcome, it's an open meeting, it's like I said before, it's recorded and live, so you're welcome to stay. So council, what I suggest is we take a five minute breather reset and then we'll get started on to the next part of our agenda. So I'll ask for recess for five minutes. You to resume? Okay, we're starting on uh number six, the lands planning and development. As was um mentioned, this committee of the whole was scheduled so that we could gain a background understanding that led to the decisions of council on land management. So primarily, it will be Arlis and his team who will run the next sections of the agenda, so I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, thank you, Reeve. Before I go to, before I initiate or discuss agenda item six point one, um it might, just from a process perspective, you might want to add the last attachment provided as maybe attachment J to the Old Man Leaseholders Association presentation. Just so it becomes, I believe, part of the agenda.
Sure, so what we could do is have a motion to receive the presentation and an addition of attachment J.
I can give you that motion.
So John gives a motion to receive the Old Man Leaseholder Association presentation and include attachment J into the meeting agenda package. Any questions? Those in favor? That's approved. Okay, thank you.
So with respect to um the the memo titled MD of Tabor Bull River Irrigation District Scope Reservoir Irrigation Project Review, I'll review um some of it. And then um I'll also turn part of it over to the project partner, Bull River Irrigation District, to speak to, I guess, um more their perspective and and impact with respect to them, given that they are the other the other partner, so I'll 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 start that and then um general manager, Richard Phillips, will come and speak to some of the BRID aspects and pieces to pieces to that. So at the at the November twelfth, two thousand twenty five regular council meeting, um council passed the following resolution. That the MD of Tabor pause any further discussions and decisions regarding lease policies, sales, lease transfer in the scope dam project on all these lands owned by the MD of Tabor until councils begin an opportunity to review all information used and the decisions made thus far, as well as any new information that might be beneficial for future decisions. Further, the council scheduled a committee of the whole meeting or two solely on these subjects to be held as soon as reasonably possible prior to council discussion, but before the end of December two thousand twenty five, which was carried. From a background perspective, the scope reservoir joint project is a unique partnership between the MD of Tabor, Bull River Irrigation District and the Bull River Irrigation District. The project will provide a viable viable alternative funding source for investment in local service delivery and falls within the lands designated land use classification, agricultural lands designated land use classification. The noted unique aspect of the project is that it will put to use irrigation water from the Bull River Irrigation District system, coupled with this area of land. Um and BRID will speak um in more detail to the to the water side of things. Twenty four quarter sections being only s- being the only significant additional area, um reference in attachment B of privately owned lands, which are owned by the MD of Tabor that can be irrigated downstream of the reservoir, unless lends itself well to the proposed project, as it will make valuable use of excess water in the reservoir instead of spilling it. The MD of Tabor is landowner is responsible for managing its lands within the current designated land use, rural agriculture. A result of implementing this project, there will be an there will be approximately thirty two hundred acres of lands um converted to cultivation lease, irrigated cultivation lease, leaving approximately sixty nine thousand two hundred eighty two hundred and eighty acres of leased land to support other agricultural segments of the community. It also includes grazing and ranching. The current leases with respect to the project area expire at the end of February two thousand twenty six. BRID representatives are expected, oh, I'm not going to read that. Um from a from the rationale side outlined in the memo, project and partnership principles being achieved within the proposed agreement are as follows. The MD of Tabor retaining ownership of its lands comprising the project lands. The BRID providing annual agreements to allow irrigation of the lands. The BRID and the MD of Tabor will share all project development, operation and maintenance costs, unless other otherwise noted within the agreement, which is also attached, and all rental funding fifty fifty. The agreement is also intended to be unattractive slash difficult for either party to unilaterally withdraw from the project to better ensure a long term viable partnership. Project is expected to generate reliable and annual funding that can both support the project costs and be committed to municipal service delivery and infrastructure investment. Attachment C um references this in the funding scenarios and right after this section, I'll uh turn the mic to our director of corporate services just to review attachment C. The project is intended to contribute a balanced approach to land use and management of municipally owned land in support of the community as a whole. On July eleventh, two thousand twenty five, um I'm just gonna, I won't read each each of the resolutions, but it references the decision points of council. There's an operating budget amendment um to pursue planning of the project up until where we're at today with respect to approval of the agreement. Administration in conjunction with the BRID, again, this is administration in following up on council resolution and direction, has completed preliminary topographic surveys to facilitate project design work, irrigation suitability and soil nutrient analysis on quarter sections associated with the project. Uh continued project implementation will include, obviously, once once council has satisfied the aforementioned resolution at the top of the memo, finalization of field surveying, lease land auction process, administration of cultivation leases, pipeline installation, pivot installation, pumps, inlets and turnouts installation, road construction, fencing installation. Um the MD of Tabor has consulted with council throughout the project to ensure the direction taken is desired by the municipality. In the community, project development and partnership consultation has occurred with the Bull River Irrigation District as an equal partner. Legal consultation has been engaged throughout various aspects of the project, solicit opinions of consideration. So there is a privileged uh piece of information with respect to um um project compliance with uh provincial regulatory and local regulatory schemes. Stakeholder engagement continues with leaseholders notification, coordinating access to leased land, project publications, updates to website content related to scope reservoir project, all all information of which has been provided to council up to this point in time. In support of the project, borrowing by law was pursued, including required public notification and engagement opportunities with respect to petitions and appeals, ultimately as outlined in the municipal government act. And the municipal district of Tabor has received feedback related to the project for various groups and individuals. So just in reference to attachment C, I will have our director of corporate service, director of corporate services review um a few, essentially a few fun um I guess, investment scenarios with respect to the project. Again, these are very, 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 I could add a couple more varies conservative. Just trying to be again um somewhat low risk in the presentation, not only to council but as well as the community. So our corporate services, Mike. Um and these aren't, they aren't, they aren't just limited to four scenarios. Four scenarios were provided just to provide a perspective and potential.
Uh yeah, so this is uh four scenarios. Um the scenarios uh assume borrowing four million dollars um to to fund for the project as uh in as discussed in the the capital project or the capital budget, part of the project through grant funding. So this will be borrowing uh four million dollars um and four different scenarios for those B. So scenario A, the MDT would acquire a ten year debenture through the prov- the province's loan to local authorities at the determined rate. Um the interest rates that are on here are what they were as of November twenty seventh, however, those rates can fluctuate depending on uh where they set them at at their at their departments, their offices there. Uh debentures may be taken in five year increments and do not offer flexible payback scenarios. Early payback typically results in fees and penalties. Assuming revenue generation for the for the MD of Tabor of six hundred fifty five thousand dollars per year, or approximately four hundred dollars per acre of uh of revenue.
That would be four hundred acres divided by two.
And annual debenture payments of
Four hundred dollars per acre divided by two. Sorry.
Uh annual debenture payments of four hundred seventy seven thousand, uh the the district taper would generate one hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars for municipal services. Over the borrowing term, interest would be a total of seven hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. Uh under scenario B, uh it's a similar approach to scenario A, but the borrowing term is longer, which means lower annual payments and more funds available for municipal services, but increased interest payments. Assuming revenue generation, again, at six hundred fifty five thousand dollars per year, and then annual debenture payments of three hundred fifty five thousand dollars, the municipal district of Tabor would generate three hundred thousand dollars for municipal services, and over the borrowing term, the interest would, the interest paid would be a total of uh one point three million dollars. Uh scenario C um would be to use a line of credit issued by a financial institution, uh which would allow for flexible payback options. The interest rate is higher than what the loans to local authorities can provide, but the flexibility could be used to offset that difference. Um assuming a fully drawn line of credit where it all funds are drawn um in in their entirety a- and and regular payment installments, the MDT or the the district taper could pay off this debt in about eight years. And assuming revenue generation of six hundred fifty five thousand dollars and annual payments of six hundred and twelve thousand five hundred, uh the municipal district of Tabor would generate forty two thousand five hundred for municipal services, and over the borrowing term, the interest would total nine hundred and one thousand dollars. Scenario D uh leverages the um the MDT's cash flow position to eliminate or nearly eliminate any interest paid. The municipal district of Tabor would acquire a line of credit but would use the the uh the funds, um the already accumulated funds to cash flow the project and only draw on the line of credit if its day to day operations required, so. This scenario also provides the quickest uh quote unquote payback, just just over six years uh to recuperate the costs, assuming um six hundred fifty five thousand dollars a year in lease revenue. And under this scenario, no funds are immediately available for municipal services until they're paid back.
I'll return back to the the main memo and at this point I will refer to uh Bull River Irrigation District um general manager, Richard Phillips. Are you coming up with with the chairman called Walt Brownwell as well? Okay, and they have a presentation here that I would suggest. Once council's through with this agenda item, maybe adding it as well.
Thank you for coming. So this meeting is live and recorded, so we have to turn the mic on. So thank you for taking the time to come.
Okay, thank you. Uh I would have dressed up a bit more if I'd have known this, but anyway.
It's all good.
Okay, uh I thought I'd just maybe give a bit of overview from our perspective as BRID on uh the scope project and uh tax recovery lands. Um I'm gonna say a bit here, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Richard, but I would say it was around ten years, give or take. Time kind of goes by fast now, but that the BRD had um a review of all our lands and we do this uh every every so many years. We look at possibilities of what we could do and realize we have return flow uh water, re-drain water, we call it, uh, that we could possibly use somewhere, and we identified the tax recovery lands as being a possible project. And I know I had mentioned this at some meetings and I've, the grazing leaseholders heard about it and, you know, I got calls from their presidents. And at that time, that was years ago, and they said, we want no part of this. And I said, okay, I will not promote it anymore because in our view at B R I D, we would have liked to see the M D, B R I D and grazing leaseholders together on some project similar to what is east of Hayes. And, you know, it's a government uh reserve grazing there where you have farmers and you have grazing lea- grazing holders and, uh, you know, governments involved there. So, and it works. And I I I know it hasn't always been easy, but it works there. And so I know we as Hayes Grazing even use those grasses for ourselves when I was a leaseholder there. So, uh, that being said, uh, we backed away in, but we did let the M D know if you're ever interested, if circumstances change, come to us and we'd be open. And um, so at this point today, we have a signed deal between the M D and the B R I D. Some of the um points were made about it, and uh we actually as B R I D spent a lot of time uh and money to make a good deal. We think economically, it's a no-brainer. We think that's, and we've done some of these land developments and uh they've shown that six-year payback, six years, all our expenses are paid. It's uh straight income from then, you know, so it works. And so that's what uh we know. Um, I've been asked some questions and Richard will answer them in his presentation here. Or even you can say their questions or their opinions stated, and that is we won't have enough water in Hayes or there's not enough drain water to provide for this. And Richard will answer that question and he's got a graph that shows it is very clearly that uh he'll answer it. I'll let him do that. But those have been some of the questions. And as I said earlier, it would be nice to see the leaseholders involved, you know, that's my opinion. And we had a meeting with Vauxhall uh grazing uh with Darrell and Ryan. Um, so it was a good meeting and they expressed interest in it, you know, so that for us, to me, that was a change. Like they did express maybe some interest in some way being involved. And so I thought, well, that's that's a change and I'll mention it here. So this being said, that's a bit of an overview of where we came from, where we are today, and Richard will give his presentation to give you more.
Okay, I'm going to speak primarily to the issue of is there enough water for this project and will there be enough water for this project twenty-five years from now? Because I've heard some concerns expressed about that. So um, in order to understand where the water for this project just really come from, you have to understand our whole concept of return flow, which of course is water that goes back to the river spilled from our system unused each year. This graph shows our return flow annually going back to nineteen ninety-two. And uh what you'll notice is, you know, in the late nineties, we were consistently spilling somewheres around ninety thousand, give or take uh acre feet per year, uh dramatic decrease through the early two thousands. And now it's, you know, bumps around a little depending on the nature of the year, but it's consistently, you know, maybe fifty-five percent of what it used to be. That's primarily a result of putting in a whole lot of pipelines in our district. So we were just spilling a lot less than we used to, and that's the first important thing to understand. Uh, next slide, please. Here's just an example of one of our return flow channels that most of you would be familiar with. This is the channel that enters highway or the Old Man River right at Highway thirty-six. It's called Expanse Cooley. Again, used to be very consistent, you know, fifteen thousand acre feet, give or take. Then we started pipelining in two thousand one in that area, and every time we put in a pipeline, the return flow would drop a little. Two thousand five was an anomaly because that was a year of tremendous flooding and we were spilling water through our system. But as soon as we started pipelining, just knocked the return flow way back and it's been way low ever since there because of the pipelines. Next slide, please. So here's an overview of our district infrastructure. The black line, I wish I had a pointer here. Um, anyhow, Little Bow Reservoir at the west end and of course, everything upstream of Little Bow Reservoir is still in our district all the way from the diversion at Carsland. But ninety percent of our irrigated acres are below the Little Bow Reservoir outlet. Uh, two primary canals leaving Little Bow Reservoir, well, only one, but it immediately splits off into what we call our main canal that flows uh east towards Vauxhall, uh goes just north of town, then out uh right by Hayes into Scope Reservoir, and then out to the Old Man River at Ronald Lane at the Highway five twenty-four crossing. Uh, the Lomond Lateral splits off, goes up to Badger Reservoir, and from there, the canal flows back down towards Lost Lake. The blue dashed lines represent pipelines on the main canal uh upstream of Scope Reservoir. And the green dotted lines there between Lost Lake and Vauxhall represent two large pipelines that are currently under construction that will be operational for the spring of twenty-seven. Um, the pipelines elsewhere are represented by the the dotted cyan lines, but anyhow, our district has about a thousand kilometers of distribution system. Two-thirds of that is now buried pipeline, and that's changed, you know, steadily over the years. When I started there nearly thirty years ago, we were at about a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty kilometers. Now we're six hundred and sixty kilometers of buried pipelines. Um, and that's why the return flow back to that first graph has gone down steadily because as we're pipelining, we don't have all these little canals spilling water back to the river. But what happens then with these ones upstream of Scope, so, okay, the ones west of Lost Lake used to spill into Lost Lake, of course, and they no longer spill into Lost Lake. That water stays in the main canal, ends up in Scope Reservoir. Um, the ones uh downstream of Lost Lake, of course, used to spill to the river, and now they don't spill to the river. The water that would have spilled there is captured in Scope Reservoir. And of course, we've reduced return flow because every canal has to have water flowing out all the time. If somebody's irrigating, you'll starve the last pump, so there has to be water flowing out. We've got rid of all that, but what we can't eliminate is the imperfections in water ordering that occur. You know, um, when farmers are on an open canal, they're really good at ordering water on because if they don't place an order, they won't have water. Um, when they're on a pipeline, they become a little less good, and our ditch riders tell me that they're far less good at ordering water off. You know, they're not so bad at asking for water when they need it, but when they're finished, they sometimes understandably might forget to order it off. So even though we've got got all these pipelines now, which have improved our efficiency tremendously, we still end up with a lot of imperfection in our system. It's just the human nature and the nature of the the system. So that excess water accumulates in Scope Reservoir. And once it's in Scope Reservoir, of course, there's only two things you can do with it. You can irrigate it with it or you can spill it back to the river. So, um, as we move forward, we are planning on building a new reservoir at Dead Horse Cooley. You can see that identified on the figure here. That will take care of the imperfections in water ordering upstream of there, but the vast majority of our system is downstream. So once we build Dead Horse, um, we will still have a lot of water coming in. Again, when those two big pipelines shown as green lines here come into operation, uh, one of them actually this coming spring and one the year after, that will um, again, water that's currently spilling to the river will be eliminated, but some of that imperfection in water ordering uh will be additional water into Scope Reservoir. So there is always going to be water coming into Scope Reservoir, no matter what. Um, next slide, please. So this one shows the actual return flow at Ronald Lane. So that is the main canal out of Scope Reservoir. And when we have too much water in Scope, that is our preferred place to get rid of it. We have a great concrete chute down to the river there. It's a good place to spill water. The only other way would be uh down lateral R into South Hayes, but that canal has far less spill capacity. So operationally, whenever Scope is too high, we simply tell our ditch rider, okay, you no longer have to be careful. Please, you know, run it sloppy, get rid of some water um at Ronald Lane. And some years, it's a large amount of water. As you can see, this only goes back, you know, the past thirteen or so years, but some years it's been as high as thirty thousand acre feet. The best year ever, uh, two thousand twenty-three, when it was severe drought in the region and we were desperately trying to do everything we could, it was still, you know, somewheres in the order of fifty-five, fifty-six hundred acre feet. But it's normal to spill at least ten thousand acre feet per year at Ronald Lane in spite of our best efforts to run the system efficiently. And again, that's just the nature of the beast with all of those pipelines upstream, all of the imperfections in water ordering. We just always end up with surplus water in Scope, no matter how hard we try. So we've got this surplus water in Scope. We cannot use it upstream of Scope because it it's in Scope. Uh, you know, adding new acres upstream does nothing to reduce the water going into Scope. If anything, it will increase it because we will only have more acres then subject to, you know, human imperfection in the water ordering process. So as we expand the district and we are continuing to to continuing to expand, it it's not going to make us have less water going into Scope. If anything, it will be more. So we've consistently got this water in Scope, and I've shown two uh lines on the bottom there. The, I think it's grayish on a little color blind uh represents what water would be used for the proposed project at thirty-one hundred acres, all using eighteen inches per acre, which is our maximum water use limit in our district. Um, so that would be a little under five thousand acre feet. So even in the worst year, we've had more than that water spilled out of Scope. And most years we have double that much water or more being spilled out of Scope. Um, our average water use across the district is typically about eleven inches. Again, averages don't mean as much, but that's average water use in B R I D. So at eleven inches, you can, it's the yellowish line there. Again, only half of the water in our driest year and and just a small fraction of the water in a normal year. So there is always a huge surplus of water in Scope Reservoir. For years, we wished we could use it somewheres to irrigate. Again, uh, there is no place to go because once you get downstream of Scope, we are completely surrounded by crown land with this little piece of tax recovery land owned by the M D being the only piece of land that is privately owned land that could be irrigated because the Crown certainly has shown no interest in irrigating their land. So um, that's where we look at this as an opportunity to put water that is truly surplus water that simply gets wasted back to the river every year, put it to good economic use, uh, make the land productive, uh, put it on the land rather than just spilling it to the river. And we will be spilling it to the river forevermore if we do not proceed with this project. That really covers the water end. I'll just maybe ask for one more slide here just to show what the B R I D has managed to do as we've tried to get more more conscientious of trying to increase revenue off our land. So we we're not a big landowner. We own maybe fifteen thousand acres as all. Uh, but I I broke it into four categories of land there that we do make revenue from cultivation leases. Again, we've got twenty-three hundred acres under pivots that the B R I D owns. We started doing that really not all that long ago, but the board recognized that we really ought to make more money off of our land instead of getting very little return from it. So we put up several pivots. We auctioned those off. We also have close to a thousand acres of farmer-owned pivots that go onto our, on our land, and mostly that's where their land is adjacent to ours and they were doing a half circle. And if they could go over on our land pretty pleased, they could do a full circle and we're happy to accommodate that. So we have close to a thousand acres of that. So then about thirty-three hundred acres of cultivation leases, that's irrigated, returning, you know, close to one and a half million dollars per year. We charge, of course, a far lower rate when the farmer owns the pivot. Um, our pivots are auctioned off. Uh, we have a little bit of oil and gas surface lease revenue. Traditionally, that was our largest source of revenue, and now it's uh insignificant relatively speaking compared to the cultivation leases. Grazing leases, the bulk of our land, eleven thousand acres returning, you know, under two hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. And just for interest, because the Scope project involves Vauxhall grazing, I showed how much land we leased to Vauxhall grazing, so you know, just under twenty-six hundred acres of dry grass and about seven hundred and seventy irrigated acres of irrigated grass. Our other major grazing leaseholder is, of course, the the Hayes Stock Grazing Association. I couldn't say the exact numbers for them, uh, but you know, they're again a a large, large leaseholder, and then the rest of our grass is um, combination of some long-term leases with private individuals as well as some that is auctioned off annually. And then our final category, solar leases. We do have one solar farm on B R I D-owned land north of Vauxhall. And then this also includes option payments on another one that's proposed in Hayes area. So that's what we're doing with our land, and that's again, where we're so interested in this joint project with the M D. It's an opportunity to make significant money uh using water that currently simply goes back to the river and provides zero return and has no ability to be used elsewhere. So there's our summary of the water situation.
I'd like to add uh two points. Going back to the project itself, there has been concerns over the years about the poor water quality on R, and that is south of Scope where the water comes out. And the reason Richard uh felt that this was due to the water comes in and goes out right away on an inlet, it doesn't circulate to the R um outlet there. So this possibly, by theory, if the project went through, it would improve the water quality, we think. That's a one point to make. The other point, looking at this, I'm glad Richard uh showed some of this. Um, for us to be possible, for it to be possible to develop some of these pivots, a lot of that came from both these grazing, m- most of it did. Is that correct? Vauxhall and Hayes grazing contributed.
Half, maybe. The the wide development, I first developed was land that the grazing association has held under lease.
Yeah, and then the sheep pasture, Salt Hayes. So, so anyway, the Vauxhall and Hayes grazing, we worked to deal with them, and they're tough negotiators. And yet, uh, we've had good workings with them uh through that process and uh they were able to, you know, get some you know, help for themselves in all this, and we, uh, of course, you know, benefited our irrigators. So anyway, just wanted to add those two points.
Thank you. John?
I have a question on um, when you're tendering out this newly uh when you put water rights on on new grass, what rates have you seen for return in the first contract? Was you, my understanding is it's usually a four-year contract? Is that right?
Yes, we've always, or maybe not always, but our typical is a four-year lease because a lot of the row crops are on a four-year rotation in our area. Um, the last project we developed was, I think, three years ago now, and in our first year, we got bid price was four hundred and twenty-five dollars per acre. You know, typically, of course, the rates go up considerably in our second lease term because there is a significant expense to the lessee to, you know, break that sod and pick the rocks and so on uh the first time. And that was, um, you know, good land, but it was also exceptionally rocky land. There was a, an awful lot of large boulders visible on the surface, so they had to invest a lot of money in rock picking on that development to, you know, get the rocks out of the otherwise good soil. It appears to me to be far rockier than the land we're talking about here. But anyhow, that that was our last one, four twenty-five per acre.
I have one more question. That's, how did you, how do you arrive at your grazing lease rates?
Again, the ones that are auctioned off are easy. It's it's simply a live auction. Uh, some of them are a old long-term lease rate that was tied to government rate, I believe, with the grazing associations, with Hayes grazing. Uh, the rate on dry grass is, it was a negotiated rate with them. Um, with Vauxhall grazing, there's a formula that links it to the government rate. So, yeah, there's a variety there. And on the irrigated grass, which is the bulk of our uh grazing revenue, because the irrigated, of course, pays far more than than dry grass. On the irrigated grass, again, it's negotiated rates uh with both with Vauxhall being linked back to the government rate through a very convoluted formula. With Hayes grazing, it was simply a negotiated rate.
Well, I'll start with the first one, easy one, I guess. So in twenty fifteen, you said, uh, you discussed with the leaseholders, right, about doing a project maybe? And they weren't interested in talking about it, correct?
In that area, yeah, I said ten years.
And then you discussed with the M D then?
Yes, uh, we've made them-
Clear on the way it went now. So what you had mentioned now is the M D come to you guys because you brought this project before, and I was told that you guys brought it to M D. I just want to be clarified, who brought it to who?
We have over the years, sorry, Walter, we we have frequently reminded M D council that if they're ever interested, we're still here and we still have the water. So anytime you decide you want to go, talk to us. We we've repeatedly, without trying to be a pain in the butt for council, reminded council over the years that this is a project waiting to happen that would be good for both of us in our opinions.
Like I said, like, my personal opinion was it would be good to include the leaseholders. So if that could work. Now, it came this way, and that's that's the way we've, and the M D made their motion, they moved it, and uh we went forward with it, and we also.
So the last time we brought up the M D come to you and said, okay, we're willing to do it then, and that's correct, I'm assuming?
Yes, the M D came to us and they said, we're willing to go into this. So that's where it, where it started uh to make the deal.
And one more question. So the amount of water spilled, I'm guessing is around twelve percent of the water coming in from what you use, kind of roughly?
More or less.
More or less, somewhere, not an exact number.
It varies year to year, of course, but but, yeah, roughly in that range.
So I'm going to use your word, so it's kind of insignificant, because looking at this revenue page, uh, thirty percent of your revenue on this, and you said insignificant amount of money is five hundred thousand. So the water is less- So the water is less, it's ten percent. So is that insignificant? Because this money you said here was five hundred thousand from oil and gas revenues, insignificant.
Well, I, 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 I meant it's insignificant relative to cultivation and becoming increasingly so as oil and gas leases are decommissioned. So it used to be a more, a, the largest source of our fund, our, uh, land revenue. It's now relatively minor compared to cultivation leases, which have become the most significant. So, you know, again, a half million isn't nothing. Uh, it helps, but it, but compared to the one and a half million we're getting off grazing, it's far less significant. And again, that gap will continue to grow as oil and gas becomes less significant in this region.
Yeah, I, I think five hundred thousand is significant amount of money because we're looking at raising for the MD, I think a million dollars. That's, that's half the money we're looking at raising, right? So, but five hundred thousand, I, in my mind, is a significant amount of money. And just so everyone knows, I don't like the, the comment of no brainer because that means if somebody doesn't agree with it, they, I would prefer you say makes money sense rather than saying no brainer. That's just my, my belief. Because if somebody doesn't agree with it, it's kind of, uh, not a proper use of term.
Okay, um, uh, I'm sorry I said no brainer. Uh, I wanted to get the point across. So, yeah, it just makes, uh, economic sense to do it. I can agree with that.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
One of the questions that repeatedly keeps coming up is pertains to the concern about this, uh, ongoing supply of water during drought periods. And I appreciate the graph that you've put up showing that you're able to consistently confirm that there shouldn't be a problem with supplying water during dry periods. Um, these meetings are live streamed for the benefit of the public. Would you be able to go through the different types of water rights that the irrigation districts are able to provide? Because one of the concerns that is being raised is that it's not a permanent water right and the tap can always be turned off if there is a need to do so. So just clarify that and I'd like to have a discussion about what the potential is to address that specific concern so that it's not some, it's not a cloud hanging over the project if it goes ahead.
Sure. No, good question. Thank you. Um, so again, the vast majority of irrigation is done under the authority of irrigation acres, which is colloquially, I can't speak after having recovered. It, it's normally referred to as water rights. Okay. So irrigation acres, uh, that's the permanent water right is the, the term in common usage. But again, the technically correct term is irrigation acre. So, uh, BRID has a limit of two hundred and ninety-five thousand irrigation acres. The Irrigation Districts Act does allow us to use annual agreements as well. That does not give the permanent water right to the land. It is renewed annually and we have quite a few acres under annual agreements already. The last development that we did, uh, just east of Scope Reservoir on land owned by the BRID, we chose to use all annual agreements. The same thing with an irrigation development we've done with three pivots on land we own at Lost Lake, it's annual agreements. Some of our own projects do have irrigation acres on them. So we have a mix ourselves. Um, historically, we've used annual agreements sometimes on drains where the water supply technically wasn't guaranteed. And also it was frankly, a way to get around our expansion limit many years ago before we had our first expansion where we used some annual agreements to let people irrigate on drains. So annual agreements, there is no guarantee of water delivery technically. But again, um, for an example, the project that we put under scope, even though it's annual agreement on our land, of course, we're going to give them water because we want to, uh, receive our rental revenue. On this project, again, there's, as I've tried to emphasize, there is nothing we can do to reduce the fact that we will, to reduce the amount of water that just ends up in scope surplus to what we would like to ideally have there. Uh, so again, that surplus water, there's two things to do with it. Use it for irrigation or spill it to the river. And in a dry year, we still have surplus water into scope. Uh, so again, it just makes more economic sense by far to, you know, have farmers paying rent to the MD and BRID to use that water than to spill it to the river. Um, you know, to, to put it into perspective too, though, the amount of water, so, you know, thirty one hundred acres or maybe thirty-two hundred, depending on how you develop this. The BRID and the six-ic nation, uh, combined, which draw on the same system, we're, we're over three hundred thousand acres already. So, you know, I've heard some wild speculation, well, you know, adding this, that'll just be the end of it for irrigators in a dry year. We're talking a one percent increase in the irrigated land. So if it was, and it isn't, but if it was requiring additional water, it would be one percent. So, you know, the hardship to other irrigators would be a one percent loss. So you would lose one percent of your eighteen inches if that were the case, but again, it's not the case. This is just using water that we will always continue to spill. It is the most beautiful project imaginable in terms of the, the water use because it doesn't require us to divert one additional drop off the river. It simply uses water that we cannot manage as efficiently as, as we would like to and therefore spill. Does that answer your question?
It, it does. Two additional questions. Have you ever had to shut off the tap for other terminable water users?
Not to my knowledge, certainly not in the nearly thirty years I've been at the district. We have never restricted anybody. Oh, sorry. And, and yeah, you mentioned terminable. So annual is not terminable. There are also terminable acres. We have a very small number of those, uh, all off of one of the reservoirs. So that is the third category. Um, and we're not talking terminable acres here, we're talking annual agreements, but we have never shut the water off to an annual agreement or a terminable acre, um, or an irrigation acre, of course.
So this one is proposed to be an annual agreement?
Annual agreements, which we will, as part of the, the agreement between the MD and BRID, they will be renewed in perpetuity for the life of this agreement, of course. So it's a technicality that they're annual, we will automatically renew them every year.
Just one last question. What would it take to go from an annual agreement to a permanent water right for this project? Is that a possibility? And, and what would be the financial cost for doing so?
Where, it's technically possible. The, the cost of doing that would be, of course, the MD's landowner would then need to purchase the, um, the rights to irrigate, which is done through the capital assets charges assessed by the district. We approved a twenty-five thousand acre expansion of the district earlier this year. We have not yet approved the bylaw increase in our expansion limit. That will be done sometime over the next couple of years and it may be staged. But it would not be possible under the rules that we have said we would to allow this project to get those acres because in our past expansions, we've always invited all applicants, anybody who's interested to make application to get irrigation acres. And then we've gone through a process to distribute them as fairly as possible. And what it's looked like typically is everybody is granted one parcel before anybody gets a second. Everybody that wants a second gets the second before anyone gets a third and so on, until we cannot give everybody that wants an additional parcel, an additional parcel. And the most we've ever granted anyone then was twelve quarter sections under our last expansion. I would expect this one to be similar. So if the MD were to say, no, we want to put permanent irrigation acres on here, uh, you might get in the order of twelve quarter sections of, of permanent irrigation acres, but it would come with that very substantial cost, uh, of the capital asset charge, whatever that will be, which then of course makes the economics of the project less attractive. It would fundamentally alter the project as well because again, right now, you're bringing the land, we're bringing the water, valuing, valuing them equally and sharing the revenue equally. That, that would fundamentally change the nature of the agreement if you were to go with permanent irrigation acres.
John has a question first and then we'll go to David.
I was, I just was wondering what terminable acres are, just because I don't know what that means.
Oh, there are acres that have the ability to be shut off in a year if there's not enough water and yet they count against your assessment. Uh, the ones that we have are a relic from thirty plus years ago and we have not issued any new terminable acres nor would we. I, I don't really see a need for them.
Just one point to clarify in your last comment. You suggested that the MD would have to apply for and receive, um, permanent water rights. I, I suggested under the arrangement, it would be the joint venture partnership that would need to obtain those water rights, which would include the BRID.
Yeah, again, like I say, it would take a restructuring of the agreement somehow to, because again, water rights are assigned to the land, uh, and yet the MD under this agreement clearly remains landowner and you wish to remain landowner, we believe. It would get really messy, I think, to put permanent water rights on this, just given the intricacies of land ownership and so on. It, it, the way we've structured the agreement is very clean and, and, and really no risk because again, the BRID, given that we're going to get half the revenue, is extremely motivated to provide the water for this project. And again, as I've tried to emphasize, it, it takes no effort to provide the water. It, it just uses water that we waste right now.
Although it would provide no economic sense to, uh, apply for permanent water rights for this project, the MD could do that over and above the agreement between the two parties.
Absolutely. If the MD wishes to irrigate other MD lands.
I mean, on this project.
On this project.
Putting the.
Yeah.
So, so that would be possible at the full expense of the MD of Tabor.
For sure. The MD's a landowner like any other landowner from the BRID's perspective.
If, if I could, I'm a little bit hesitant to even contemplate bringing it up because it probably is really less relevant in the big picture. And I do kind of share this perspective, I guess, full well knowing that decisions, lots of conversations happen above my pay grade, parking lots, convention, whatever. But, um, to one of the questions with respect to who approached who, I guess it was my recollection and I understand that perhaps there's other discussions happening above my level, um, which often takes place. I guess it was, it was communicated to me that, um, there were some discussions that took place that since the MD of Tabor is in the throes of its land management plan, policy development, um, there was conversations with some representatives of the MT of Tabor, um, not myself, and, and the BRID, where it was more of a mutual, um, conversation and approach to initiate it. Um, it's important for me that, that what is accurate, that what really happened is properly portrayed in the meeting. So I don't want to put Walter or Richard or anybody else around the table that had those conversations on the spot, but it's important for me, just from a perspective of integrity, um, that however that was approached is, is understood. So I can't, I can't speak to how that happened, but I, I just can speak to what I was, the under, the, the impression that I was given when, uh, I was given the instruction to set up meetings and coordinate with the BRID. There may not be an answer, but that's just my perspective.
If, if I could speak to that, again, I, I don't think you're going to find a paper trail on this one, but again, there's been a lot of verbal over the years discussion between M, MD counselors, BRID board members, myself as manager, you know, suggesting that this was a, a potentially great project. And again, from the BRID's perspective, that if the MD was ever, you know, interested, uh, we're interested, we, we, we've had those, it, it's, it's been a, a constant theme, but again, we've tried to, you know, not be overbearing about it. We have, you know, constantly been reminding the MD at virtually every opportunity that this is a good project that we would like to develop. Um, and again, as the MD has changed their perspective on lands, uh, it became clear that that was, but again, there's no moment where we could say, oh yes, this was agreed, now we're going to do it. I mean, it's, it's just one of those things that has developed.
So I don't want to assume, but so originally you had a discussion with the, the MD and the grazing lease and grazing lease had said they want to know part of it and the MD said no. Then you continue to go back to the MD saying, hey, this would be a good project, good project. I'm assuming that you kept going back to the grazing leases and kept bringing it back to them equally then because you said you wanted to keep bringing it back to the MD because it made sense. So I'm assuming you kept going back to the grazing lease. I don't want to assume, so I want you, I want to know for sure you kept going back to them because you said it's a good project for everybody?
Okay, the former president of Vauxhall Grazing said they wanted no part of it. And, uh, I didn't know, I did not want to offend him and keep bringing it up to him. As Richard said, you know, we, we did not do that. And similar Hayes grazing showed no interest in breaking, um, native grass, they called it. I call it tax recovery. So not to offend them either, I did not, uh, push it with them, I respected and left it with the MD. And, um, it's up to the MD, it's their land and if they come to us, then we're open to it. But, you know, I, over the years, I've had conversations with many leaseholders and I've been one myself and I felt that it's a good opportunity for them. And so, you know, I, I, I hope that they would somehow get involved to better themselves through the process and I can stand by that.
Okay, so it was just to be clear then, it was just brought up initially and then there was, they weren't involved no more.
Any further questions? Arlos, anything from you regarding the scope project?
No, the only other thing with respect to the scope project that I'm sure council will at some point review today is attachment F, um, which is, um, some of the compliance regulatory related matters.
Right. So, uh, just for councils, um, so we can have a bit of a plan. We do have a closed session item. Do you want to deal with all of it at once or do you want to go in and out?
It could be what council's preference. I mean.
Well.
You could carry on with what's, what's in the open session part of the meeting and then deal with closed session, but it's totally a council's preference.
Council, are you good with carrying on with open session and then we have a closed session at the end? Or do you want to go into scope, the attachment F right now? I'm just looking for some guidance. It doesn't matter to me. Okay, let's just stay in open and then we'll continue on. So at this time, if you have any questions on the scope reservoir project review or, um, anything that was discussed in this portion of the agenda, you can ask further questions. And if not, then we'll receive the scope reservoir project review just as a point of Okay, so seeing no more questions, I'll just look for a motion to receive the scope reservoir project review.
I can motion that we receive the scope review.
Thank you. So from David, any questions on that motion? Yes.
Do we have to add the presentation that was given to us here? It's not in our attachment, I don't believe.
Right. Let's call that attachment.
G.
G, because F is enclosed, so attachment G provided by, over. David, we just heard about not having friendly motions in our formal things, but are you good to add that? Doesn't make sense to do that as amendment.
Yes, we can add that.
Okay. So the motion is to receive the scope reservoir project review and add attachment G provided by the BRID to the agenda package. Questions? Those in favor? That motion's carried. Thank you, Walter and Richard, for taking the time and explaining your portion of this joint project. What's up? Yeah, so, yes, that's what they're saying. And so, but some stuff is crazy to me. Yes. So, but like even at RMA, they do a friendly amendment because it's, I missed adding the attachment. So, yes, but that's what they're wanting us to do. Yeah. To me, the amendment would be to change the context. So, all right. It's okay. I don't mind people understanding how we're making the motions. So we will continue now to, and if you want a break, just wave at me so that. Okay. All right. I'll call recess for five minutes so then we can get ready for the next part. Okay. I'm good with that. Okay, all right, I'll call recess for five minutes so then we can get ready for the next part. Okay, I'm good with that. Okay, we'll resume the meeting and we'll move on to the land management strategy project summary.
Sorry, I missed, but you might have said. The land management strategy, land management project memo is is provided to committee of the whole today. Again, in an effort to satisfy the resolution that was made at the November 12, 2025 regular council meeting. I won't I won't reread it, but it's there for reference. And again, we're just trying to share as much of the information, or at least access to as much of the information as we can. It took place throughout the project. I do expect probably in the next committee of the whole where where that was scheduled for this purpose. Council will have or council have opportunity to share their perspectives and what they'd like to see, if any, with respect to potential policy changes. With respect to the background, I will I'll I'll just pass the torch to our manager of lands planning and development, Brian Pierce.
Okay, and although it may be a little overly time consuming, I'm going to read the memo through in its entirety. We will go back to the link there to some of the documents that fall in our MD of Tabor website, the land management plan website. And then we'll proceed into reading and reviewing the 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 new the new newly passed cultivation and grazing leases that were passed in in August and September respectively. Relative to the background, the land management history obligations, lease summaries, lease review, along with various other contributing factors have been provided to council over the past year to support the development of recommendations and alternatives for land management policy and lease development. And the MD has undertaken this work throughout 2024 and 2025 due to the fact that all MD MDT cultivation and grazing leases accounting for over 82,000 acres will be expiring within the next 18 months. This work will result in updated policies that will guide the MD's MDT's future land management approaches and options that can be benefit the MD of Tabor as a whole. A land management plan page on the MD of Tabor website has been established for the duration of this project. This has acted as a depository for informational presentations to council and stakeholders, newly passed land policies and leases, and a variety of supplemental information. This can be found at the following link, which we will circle around to here shortly. Rationale, the MD of Tabor continues to review its organizational policies and procedures to ensure currency and effectiveness in conjunction with the expiry of municipal land leases in 2026 and 2027. The review of several policies related to grazing leases and grazing land policy are necessary and natural next steps. The review and resulting recommendations have contributed to several decision-making steps resulting in MDT approved policies and corresponding leases for both the MDT cultivated and grazing lands. At the August 19th to 202025 council meeting, MDT council approved the cultivated lands policy and the associated cultivated lease agreement. At the September 23rd, 2025 council meeting, MDT council approved the grazing lease policy and the associated community pasture grazing lease, transitional grazing lease, and tender grazing lease. The position of administration. Administration will make efforts to provide council the necessary information they require to understand matters pertaining to MDT land management. As next steps to further strategy and policy development, administration is anticipating the following next steps outlined below. Preliminary information relative to the following topics will be provided at the December 9th council or committee of the whole meeting. Number one, information regarding further land sales policy development. If when land sales is triggered or considered by council. Existing MDT Tabor land policy review. Draft manage municipal land decision-making framework policy. Engagement and consultation. Public consultation was completed as outlined in the project, and results have been captured in what what we heard report were reports. During the initial public engagement sessions, input was received for consideration through additional public engagement sessions, public surveys, and in-person engagement opportunities with council. Further public consultation was scheduled for July 7, 2025 to present proposed land management policies and leases to MDT residents and stakeholders. Information was presented with the recognition that no formal decision decisions had been made at that point in time. There were approximately 100 participants at the at that that attended that July 7 informational session. As previously mentioned, feedback has been captured in the public engagement report to be presented as part of the decision-making process. Legal counsel has been engaged throughout various aspects of the policy development to solicit opinions for consideration. And there's a number of attachments that we will probably be looking at after we've presented the the two different leases, the cultivation and grazing leases. As additional information for council and attendees today.
So we'll just go straight to the land management page website. Just simply because it's already 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 publicly available information. We'll click on the, we'll review the cultivation policy first, which comes into effect upon expiry of the cultivation leases, March 1, 2027. The municipal district of Tabor has developed a new cultivation policy and revised lease agreement to administer the municipality-owned municipally-owned cultivated lands. Over the last several decades, the MD of Tabor has acquired approximately 6,000 acres of deeded cultivated land through traditional tax recovery proceedings. These lands have been administered by way of a longstanding cultivation leases, MD of Tabor cultivation leases in the absence of a formalized municipal policy. Prudent municipal administration requires periodic review of established policies and development of new policies to ensure their relevance and adjust to new realities. The MD of the MD of Tabor cultivation lease has not received a substantive review for many years. Previous MD of Tabor councils have consistently made the decision to retain tax recovery lands for the betterment of residents of the municipality. However, council of the day defined that, I guess. The MD of Tabor have retained these cultivated lands for the purpose of generating reliable annual revenue for MD of Tabor operations. By virtue of this policy, MD of Tabor council provides the CAO and their delegates the authority and direction to approve and administer lease assignments, tenuring of leases, and lease improvements on all MD of Tabor cultivation leases, provided such decisions comply with the policy. MD of Tabor council will continue to determine whether to sell or retain cultivated lands when leases are surrendered. Rental rates and any compensation payable to the MD under this policy. Policy guidelines and procedures. One lease term, lease terms will be run for five consecutive crop years. Surrender of cultivation but surrender of cultivation leases by leaseholder, subject to the one-time right of refusal below in circumstances where leaseholders choose to surrender their lease to the MD of Tabor, MD of Tabor council can resolve to either sell the quarter by way of public tender, closed tender, or public auction. Or two, relit the land for lease for a lease term to be determined by council. Three, solicit proposals from MD of Tabor residents or MD of Tabor property owners for an alternative use for the lands. The tender will be based on cash rent for the term of the lease. New cultivation leases carry no future entitlement to the lease to lease the land. If the land is to be re-tendered for lease, only residents or property owners of the MD of Tabor and residents and property owners of municipalities within the MD of Tabor are eligible to submit bids. Despite the above, for any cultivation lease that is set to expire on or before 2027, administration will carry out the tender process in a way that will allow tenants under expiring leases to grant it a one-time right, first refusal to re- to re-lease the cultivation lands. The terms of this limited right of first refusal will be as follows. One, upon selecting successful bid or tender, administration will give written notice to the previous tenant holder of the right of first refusal, and the notice will include details of the successful bid or tender and other terms and conditions of the proposed lease. Two, previous tenant will be given five business days from receiving the above notice to either accept the new lease or the terms and of the price outlined in the notice. And failing such acceptance, the MD of Tabor will be permitted to lease cultivation lands to another tenant or occupant, and the previous tenant's right of first refusal rights will automatically terminate. And three, if the previous tenant accepts the offer presented under eye above, sorry, yeah, one above, the term of the new lease will be five years unless otherwise approved by council. This will be one-time right of first refusal offered to tenants of leases that expire on or before 2027. Only for clarifications, after 2027, previous lease leaseholders will not be given preferential treatment and will not benefit from any right of first refusal to lease cultivated land. Surrender of lease lease interest process. Leaseholder provides written notice to the MD of Tabor with their intentions to surrender their lease back to the MD of Tabor and remove themselves from the lease premises. Council determines if land will be sold, re-tendered for lease, or solicit proposals for an alternate use. See land sale process. Perspective tender eligibility conditional on bidder being in good standing with the MD of Tabor, having no outstanding rents, property taxes, utility accounts, or bylaw enforcement or compliance orders. Perspective tenant must be an MD of Tabor resident or MD of Tabor property owner, or as a resident slash property owner in a municipality within the MD of Tabor. As per established council policy, administration undertakes a tender process to relit the lease premises. Replacement lease agreement executed with new lessee. Four, irrigation of MD cultivated lands. Leaseholders must apply and receive written approval from the MD of Tabor prior to irrigating MD any MD lands. Where approval has been provided by the MD of Tabor, a new lease will be required that's subject to a five-year term unless otherwise approved by council. The leaseholder is responsible for any costs associated with the purchase, installation, operations, maintenance of the irrigation infrastructure, purchase of water rights, purchasing of water rights and payment of annual water rates are the responsibility of the leaseholder. Annual rental rate for irrigating MD of Tabor lands will be established by council. Five, lease improvements. Provided the leaseholder has acquired MD of Tabor consent, which will not be unreasonably withheld, the lessee will have the right to make improvements to the demise property that are deemed to be a benefit to the lease area. All improvements undertaken will be at the sole expense of the lessee. Lessee has the right within six months of the termination or self-removal from the lease to take, remove, or carry away from the demise property all of the lessee's fixtures. If fixtures are not removed within six months, then then such fixtures become the property of the MD of Tabor. Lease improvement process, leaseholder submits a written request to the MD to undertake lease improvements on their prospective leases. Administration determines if proposed improvement is acceptable or appropriate. Administration issues a letter notifying the leaseholder if the improvement has been approved or not approved. If approved, the list of conditions will accompany the letter. Administration inspects leaseholder improvements to ensure compliance to MDT conditions. Six. A, surface leases. As of January 2021, leaseholders shall not be entitled to any compensation for any surface activity, including but not limited to geophysical operations by own gas. Seven, lease termination by MD. The MDT MD of Tabor reserves the right to terminate the lease over any or all cultivated lands in order to facilitate a sale of the lands, provided the MD of Tabor gives no more than one year written notice to the tenant. Or two, allow the MD of Tabor to grant a lease to a third party for an alternate use, provided the MD of Tabor gives 30 days' notice to the tenant. Eight, subletting of cultivated lands. Subletting of the lease area by the leaseholder is strictly prohibited. The MD of Tabor may at any time request evidence from the leaseholder. Land described as being held by the lessee for the lessee's sole use and benefit. Should the lessee be found to be subletting any portion of the cultivated lands without prior written consent of the MD of Tabor, he shall immediately forfeit the lease on the property, and the lease will be tendered to the public by the lessor. Nine, weeds. Leaseholders are responsible for the control of all noxious and nuisance weeds as defined by as defined by the Weed Control Act and MD of Tabor bylaw number 1613. Growing of crops in condition of land. Cultivation land leases must include an acknowledgement by the tenant and the MD of Tabor that the cultivated lands are in good condition and repair at the commencement of the lease term, and that the tenant will put into a crop in a good husband-like manner typical to accepted agronomic practices. Cultivation land leases must include compliance with laws clause, which includes specific recognition of the requirement to comply with the Soil Conservation Act. Property taxes, the lessee is responsible for payment of all the taxes, rates, and assessments, which may be levied against the demise premises during the continuance of a set term. Twelve, no assignment. Tenant shall not assign, sublet, or transfer cultivation lease. Thirteen, tenant purchase option. Tenants may request to purchase their leased cultivation lands at any time during the term of their lease, provided the tenant is not in default of the lease. B, tenant triggered sale process. B1, tenant submits a written request to the MD of Tabor to request the sale of the cultivated lands. B2, council will determine. Two, council will determine if cultivated land should be sold. Three, if approved. By council, administration will offer the cultivated lands for sale pursuant to the land sale process provided under section 14 of this policy. Tenants are not granted a right of first refusal or priority right to purchase cultivated lands without competition. If cultivated lands are sold, but the tenant is not this successful bidder, the cultivation lease will terminate within three months of council approving the sale. Fourteen, land sale process. If the sale of cultivated land is approved by council or if a tenant requests to purchase the cultivated lands under the current lease, the following procedures must be followed. One, council must confirm that sale of cultivated lands is in the best interest of the MD of Tabor. Sales will occur using competitive process or other public offering unless otherwise directed by council. If land is to be sold, administration drafts tender for advertising in print and social media. Bidders are not required to be residents of the MD of Tabor. Sale may be subject to reserve bid, reserve bid amount to be determined by appraisal by MD of Tabor Assessment Department or independent appraiser. Land being offered for sale on an as-is, where-is basis. If a bid satisfies all qualifications, the MD of Tabor will accept the highest bid. Land sale documentation and land titles registration through professional legal services. Any sale agreement for cultivated lands must be conditional on obtaining approval by council. Policy does not represent a comprehensive itemization of all the terms and conditions as described in the MDT cultivation lease. I'm just going to go back to the memo real quick. So that just essentially demonstrates what currently is or what has recently been approved for implementation, March 1, 2027. If I go to, just bear with me. All the gray, just, just for quick reference in the map here. Um, the gray shades references the cultivation leases. But. So moving on to. The. Policy, the policy that was passed. Go back to the website. With respect to. Grazing lease. We'll, we'll reference that, review that real quick here. And then reference the, the mapping attachment again, just to. Put a little more context behind it, and this is where we're at. Again, this is where we're at currently to come into effect upon expiry of the existing leases. Whether that's in two thousand twenty six or twenty twenty seven. Save you guys more pain of listening to me.
Okay, as mentioned, um, these policy was adopted on September twenty third, two thousand twenty five, uh, comes into effect May, March first, two thousand twenty six. For formerly tax recovery grazing leases. Policy also comes into effect March first, two thousand twenty seven for formerly M D T grazing leases. The policy statement, so the municipal district of Tabor has developed a new policy and revised lease agreements. To administer the municipally owned grazing lands. Over the set, over the several, the last several decades, the municipal district Tabor has acquired approximately seventy-five thousand acres of deeded grazing lands. These lands have been administered by way of a longstanding M D T lease agreements. In the absence of a formalized municipal policy. The purpose, uh, prudent municipal administration requires periodic review of essential policies and development of new policies to ensure their relevance and adjust to new realities. The benefits that may arise from the granting of grazing leases. In a consistent and transparent manner can aid in the generation. Of revenue to increase finance, fiscal sustainability. Aid in creating a safe and prosperous community as well as promote effective land management. Land use management. The purpose of this policy is to provide the framework and establish transparent guidelines. For how the M D of Tabor will administer grazing leases. The policy sets out guidelines, rates and conditions with respect to the leasing of M D T, M D of Tabor lands for grazing purposes. Roles and responsibilities with relation to the policy. Administration, subject to those decisions specifically reserved for, for council. The C A O and or designate administration will have general oversight over the M D Tabor's grazing lease program, including. Administering and enforcing grazing leases, establishing the standard form of grazing lease for M D of Tabor lands. Tendering new grazing leases. Authorizing tenant lease improvements. And initial review of requests for purchasing grazing lands and requesting further information from prospective purchasers prior to submitting requests to council. Provided that the request or process complies with the requirements of this policy. All submitted to, all proposals submitted to council for decision must outline. The reasoning for the request and will be evaluated based on current municipal objectives, bylaws and procedures, as well as applicable provincial legislation. Council. The M D of Tabor council must approve and determine new tenants, new lease agreements. Whether to sell or retain grazing lands for tender when leases are surrendered. Option to purchase transactions and final sales price. And proposals that are not in compliance with the requirements of this policy. Compensation for tenant improvements were applicable. The sale of grazing lease lands to third parties. Leasing options under this policy, grazing leases will be issued in one of the following forms. Tendered, uh, tender grazing lease, this form of lease will be utilized anytime a tenant surrenders their grazing lease. Or a grazing lease expires or is terminated as per the terms of the lease. Second type, community pasture grazing lease, this form of lease will be utilized when the tenant is a grazing association. The third, the third form transitional grazing lease, this form of lease will be utilized for all grazing leases other than. A tender grazing lease or a community pasture lease. So to go further with the tender grazing lease applicable terms, the following terms are included in the tender grazing lease agreements. Number one, the lease term, so the term will run for five consecutive years. Rental rate, the rental, the rent will be based on market rate for grazing leases in southern Alberta. At the time the lease is issued, which will be established via the, the tender process outlined below. No assignment. So third, third term will be no assignment, no assignment, tenants shall not assign, sublet or sell a tender grazing lease. The second type, uh, community pasture grazing lease, applicable terms, the following terms will included for the community pasture grazing lease assignments. Number one authorized tenants, community pasture grazing leases shall only be granted to grazing associations. Incorporated at the date of this policy, the approved tenants. Uh, as of the date of this policy are as follows. Barnwell Grazing Association, Circle E Grazing Association, Finn Castle Grazing Association, Haystock Grazing Association, Boxall Grazing Association. Second term, the lease term, lease term will run a ten in ten consecutive, run for ten consecutive years. Tenants will be granted a further option to renew for a further ten years. As long as they are in good standing in compliance with their lease. Number three rental rates and adjustments for the first two years of the term, the tenant shall pay rent calculated as twenty-six dollars and ten cents per A U M. Commencing on the third year of the term and again on the seventh year of the term. Rent under the community pasture grazing lease will be adjusted by council to reflect. The then current market rate for grazing leases in southern Alberta. Based on data from the M D of Tabor lease tenders and local market rates. Number four, no assignments, tenants shall not assign, sublet or sell a community pasture grazing lease. The third, uh, third type transitional grazing lease applicable terms. Uh, the following terms will be included in the transitional grazing lease assignments, number one lease term. Lease terms will run five consecutive years and then terminate. Number two rental rates and adjustments for the first two years of the term, the tenant shall pay rent calculated as twenty-six dollars and ten cents per A U M. Commencing on the third year of the term, rent under the transitional grazing lease will be adjusted by council. To reflect the then current market rate for grazing leases in southern Alberta. Based on data from M D of Tabor lea- uh, lease tenders and local market rates. The third, uh, right, the first or a right of first refusal. And expiry of the transitional grazing leases tenants shall be granted a right of first refusal. Or priority right to lease the grazing lands as follows. Number one upon expiry of the transitional grazing lease, the grazing lands may be made available to lease. In accordance with the lease tender process outlined below. Number two, upon the M D of Tabor receiving an offer to lease. Based on the competitive tender process that the M D of Tabor is willing to accept. The M D of Tabor shall deliver a copy of the offer to lease to the tenant. Number three, the tenant shall have fifteen days for the receipt. Of the offer to lease to advise the M D of Tabor that the tenant is exercising its fir- its right of first refusal. And upon exercising the right of first refusal, the tenant shall have the right to lease the lands on the same terms. And conditions as are set forth in the offer to lease and in the form of a new tender grazing lease. And number five, in the event that the tenant fails to send notice under number three above. Within the time period set forth above, the M D of Tabor shall be free. To lease the lands to a third party in accordance with the offer to lease presented to, to the tenant. Number four, no assignments, the tenants, tenants shall not assign, sublet or sell a transitional grazing lease. Terms that apply to all grazing leases, the following terms apply to all grazing, every grazing lease under, uh. Unless other authorized by council. Tenant purchasing option, not A, tenants may request to purchase their leased grazing, grazing lands at any time. During the term of their lease, provided the tenant is not in default of the, of the lease as follows, number one. Tenant submits a written request to the M D of Tabor to request a sale of the grazing lands. Number two, council will determine if grazing lands should be sold. Number three, if approved by council, administration will offer the grazing lands for sale pursuant to. The land sale process provided under part H, section three of this policy. Number four tenants, tenants are not granted a right of first refusal or priority right to purchase grazing lands without competition. Number five, if grazing lands are sold, but the tenant is not the successful bidder. The grazing lease will terminate within three months of council approving the sale in accordance with part H, section three of this policy. Number two, surface leases. Tenants shall not be entitled to any compensation for any surface activity. Including but not limited to geophysical operations, oil and gas. Number three lease termination by the M D of Tabor, the M D of Tabor will have the right to terminate grazing leases. In order to facilitate a sale of lands on no more than one year's written notice. Number two, in order to allow the landlord to grant a lease to a third party for an alternative use. On thirty days written notice and number three, if in the option of admini- if in the option. Or sorry, in the opinion, sorry, in the opinion of administration, the tenant has not used the, the leased lands for grazing for two or more years. On thirty days written notice. Number four compensation for tenant fencing. If a grazing lease is terminated by the M D of Tabor prior to the expiry of the lease, other than for default. Or a tenant surrenders their lease, the M D of Tabor may compensate the tenant. For fencing installed by the tenant in accordance with the following process, number one. Administration will inspect the condition of the fencing and take reasonable, reasonable steps to determine the residual value of the fencing. Based on the condition of the fencing and remaining functional life. Number two, administration will submit a report to council. With a reasonable estimate of the residual value of the fencing for council's consideration. Number three, compensation for the fencing, if any, will be determined by council based on the residual value. Number four, the subsequent tendering of the land by the municipal district Tabor will include the provision that the successful tenderer. Will be responsible for paying to the M D of Tabor the residual value of the fencing, if any. Following the closure, uh, number five, following the closure of the, of the tender and the receipt of payment for the residual value. Of the fencing from the successful tenderer, if any, the M D of Tabor will follow the former tenant. Will forward to the former tenant, the compensation as determined by council. Number five, property taxes, the leasing is responsible for payment of all taxes. Rates and assessments which may be levied against grazing lease lands during the terms of the lease, during the term of the lease. Surrendered leases, number one surrender, surrender of lease interest process. A if a grazing lease is surrendered by a tenant, a grazing lease expires or is terminated. Council will determine if the grazing lands should be, should be tendered for further leasing, sold or retained by the M D of Tabor. Number two lease tender process. Tenant, tenant provides written notice to the M D of Tabor. With their intentions to surrender their lease back to the M D of Tabor and remove themselves from the lease premise. B council determines if land is to be sold, re-tendered for lease or solicit proposals for an alternative, alternate use. See the land sales process. C prospective leaseholder eligibility condition, eligibility conditional on bidder being in sta- in good standing with the M D of Tabor. Having no outstanding property taxes, utility counts or by law enforcement or compliance orders. Perspective tenant must be a resident of the prop- or a property owner within the M D of Tabor or as a resident. Or property owner in a municipality within the M D of Tabor. As per established council policy, administration undertakes a competitive tender process to relit the lease premises. Replacement lease agreements. Agreement executed with new lease. Number three land sales process. If a sale of grazing lands is approved by council or if a tenant requests to purchase the grazing lands under their current lease, the following procedures must be followed. One council must confirm that a sale of the grazing lands is in the best interest of the M D of Tabor. Number two, sales will occur using a competitive process. Or other public offering unless otherwise directed by council. Number three, if land is to be sold, administration drafts ten, drafts tender for advertising in print and social media. And number four, bidders are not required to be residents of the M D of Tabor, number five. Sale may be subject to reserve bid, reserve bid amounts to be determined by appraisal by M D Tabor assessment department or independent appraiser. Or six, land being offered for sale on an as-is, where-is basis, number seven, if a bid satisfies all qualifications. The municipal district of Tabor will accept the highest bid. Number eight, land sales document, document preparation and land title registration administered through professional legal services. Number nine, uh, any sales agreement for grazing lands must be conditional. On obtaining final approval by council. And finally, the, the policy does not represent a comprehensive itemization of all terms and conditions as described. In the, in the form of grazing lease required by the M D of Tabor.
So just a couple, just a couple of points of reference for both the cultivation lease policy and the. Grazing lease policy. I guess the introductory statements, just the reference, um. I guess the reality of, of the municipality. And its environment changing over time, so councils change from time to time. The environment in which municipality. Operates changes over time. And references the need for, for actually having a policy framework. Which ultimately is specifically for the grazing leases previously did not exist other than leases. Other than the actual lease documents. Um, and then. I believe the previous cultivation policy was. Or the first of its kind cultivation policy was in twenty, two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two. Council had looked at that, but. Since approved with the iteration that we just reviewed. So we can also reference. Oh, I wanted to have Brian Pierce just kind of reference this, I'll go back to our agenda here. Attachment. See, um, just to provide a, I guess, a high level comparison. Of what was recently passed compared to the existing expiring leases. Brian, if you just want to summarize that real quick.
Just to.
This is, sorry, this is specific to the grazing lease comparison.
On the top it is, there is a cultivation comparison on the bottom as well for the previous policy and, and the recently passed policies. So on, on the top there, the grazing lease policies that are, will be expiring in the next eighteen months, both, uh. I do split it out on the bottom, sells there between the tax recovery and the M D grazing leases, but, um. General terms, the, the expiring leases carried a ten-year term. With a seventy cents or three twenty-three dollars and twenty cents per A U M rental rate. In both cases, the, uh, there was the ability for the leaseholder to assign their leases to family members. This is where the distinction occurs between the historic M D of Tabor grazing leases, so if, if there's any questions on that, I guess, just. To differentiate between the M D grazing leases and the tax recovery leases. The M D grazing leases that are, are leased lands that the M D has acquired over the decades. For, for, in some cases generations and over probably forty years likely, and some of them go back that far. The tax recovery leases are, are lands that we acquired through tax recovery processes that were, were fee simple transfers to the M D of Tabor that have occurred in the last. Dozen years or so, dozen to fifteen years, I think, two thousand seven was the first one, so I guess we're, we're encroaching on, on twenty years now. So there was different terms on those, on those leases, um, just through negotiations with, with leaseholders when the tax recovery leases. Their lands did come back to the M D of Tabor, so. And then the, the terms of the M D grazing leases, the original M D grazing leases stayed relatively the same. So the ability to sell those leases.
Lane has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Just one question, it indicates in the table that. Under grazing leases for the expiring lease.
Yep.
The option or ability to sell lease rights was not permitted for grazing leases?
That's right, but, but it is for the tax recovery, that's why, that's why I made the distinction between the two types of lease grazing leases that we have. So we have a tradit- more of a traditional grazing lease of older lands that the M Ds has, has had longer. Relative to the tax recovery leases that on lands that we've more recently acquired through the province transfers.
So is that contrary to what we were, was suggested earlier that it's always been a right to sell grazing leases?
So.
On, on the leases with, it's not contrary with respect to the M D of Tabor tax recovery. Lands.
There never was the ability on the M D, the, their traditional M D grazing leases to sell the rights. But it was to assign the rights to family members. On the tax recovery leases that was always been. In there as, as the ability to, to sell, to market their leases and, and assign to family members.
Just so we can understand, how much of that old kind of lease land do we have compared to tax recovery?
I think there's around twenty, we, we have that somewhere, but it, it's about twenty-three thousand acres of, of M D grazing leases. thousand acres of of M D grazing leases and about fifty-eight thousand acres of tax recovery lease. And and the balance of our lands then make up.
Yeah, there's there's a picture of what, look at the map of what it look like, what it currently looks at.
I'm just zooming in on the legend so you can see the different types. So the red in this, in attachment A, the red shades are M D cultivation lease, yellow M, the M D grazing lease, and the blue, M D tax recovery transferred lands.
Did that answer your question? Okay. Yep.
I'll just got a question. So a lease signed before, and there's a clause in it, what takes precedent, the new one we want, or we gotta, we still gotta honor the old lease, what if there was a clause in there stating they have a right, will that take precedent over what we just changed?
The current leases don't come for, the current lease, the terms of the current leases only apply when the previous lease expires. So we're still, we're still under the.
But if there's a clause that's saying they have a right to renew, how does that relate to this? We said now they don't, but a last clause, I'm not, I don't know for sure if it is or not, but if there's a clause in there that says they had a right to renew, would that not have to be included into their next one they sign, say they they have ten years and then then we can discuss the new policy?
For the.
Cause you're changing a contract that they signed, I'm assuming.
Yeah, so so. I mean, the memos and updates that administration's provided and that council, I have to speak of council, whether it's current or past.
I just want to know what takes precedent, the new one we made, or is the, if one they signed, does it still apply? Then we have to change it accordingly.
Up until the point of expiration.
So if there's a ten-year, I'm just, if there's a ten-year, say they have a right to renew for ten years, that would have to apply for the next term, would it not?
The right to renew or the extension for ten years was from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-six, and no, no promise to extend beyond that.
There was nothing in the contracts that said they had a right to renew for another ten years?
There never was in in the M D grazing leases of twenty-three thousand acres, there were never, was never a consideration in that lease to to provide additional terms.
You were still going through that comparison. Were you done?
Going, no, going down the list here, uh, the option to purchase, there was a consideration in in the tax recovery lease, but never in the M D grazing lease, traditional grazing leases, and in the oil and gas, the terms were different as well, wherein the tax recovery leases, we provided four hundred dollars per lease site, and on the traditional or legacy, whatever you want to call them, return them, to be, uh, you were able to recover up to half your rent, and that still is today, until it expires in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-six for the tax recovery leases. So moving into what has been recently passed, under the different types of leases, we'll start with the transitional grazing leases, which ultimately be will be the M D tax re- the tax recovery leases and the M D leases will both fall under that tr- transitional lease, with the exception of the community pastures. So they'll be offered a five-year lease right, and for the first term, and then.
Excuse me, sorry, John has a question.
I think there is a tendered line there, too.
There's tendered is is the second column there.
You were saying the M D grazing lease would be the tendered one or not, whereas the transitional would be the traditional tax recovery that that is, uh, not under community pastures.
Right, so transitional will include tax recovery, M D grazing lease, and the ones that are tendered will continue to be tendered, and the ultimately, the trend, the transitional leases, which are tax recovery and M D leases, will end up being tra- tendered leases after five years. So five years with a with a fir- first right of refusal for an additional five-year term under the transitional leases. The rent will be, as established, currently twenty-six dollars and ten cents per A U M for both, for for the transitional leases, with no, currently no, uh, ability to assign to family members, and with no ability to market your leases, to lease rights, I guess, is what the term we've been using today, and option to purchase for, yes, and oil and gas payments will be removed. Tendered leases are the ones that have been re-surrendered back to the M D over the last several years, and councils opted to, um, tender those out for to market them through a tender process and 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 those will continue to be tendered leases under a five-year, and there's only about just over a thousand acres of that type of type of lease currently. There'll be five years with no option to extend, rental will be established, of course, through the tender, no ability to sign to family members, no ability to sell your lease rights, no option to per- or sorry, yes, there will be an option to purchase, as I guess there will be an option to purchase on any of the, any of the new, under the any of the new terms of the these these new leases and policies, and no oil and gas. Uh, this this is the community pasture lease is is a bit of a further departure from from the, uh, transitional leases and ultimately the tendered leases, where they'll be offered a ten-year option for another ten-year, one, for an additional ten-year term. The initial rate for the rent will be twenty-six dollars and ten cents with to be revisited at years three and seven of the ten-year initial lease. Um, no, no provision to assign to family members, no ability to sell their lease rights, there is the option to purchase, and no oil and gas. And a lot of information there, I guess, just trying trying to summarize what, where we were and and where we currently or will currently be once the leases expire.
I am a cattle guy, and I do have a lot of provincial lease, and, um, frankly, I'm kind of shocked by these new terms. I'm new to this process, but to me, it's clearly a policy to get land sold. There's nothing in these new policies that allows for continuation of, uh, of grassland in a, in a long-term business. In in my mind, I see it clearly, and that may be the right answer for the M D, I'm not saying that's not the right answer, but it, to me, the policies in the past reflect what we told the Alberta government we would do with this land if we got it. We told them that we would keep it as grazing land, and and I'm not saying that's the right thing to do, I'm just saying that's what we said in the documents, and this new policy is, there's, there's a whole bunch of no's when it talks about anything that would be a la- allow this land to stay in a family, to stay as grass, it is clearly a policy to sell land, and, uh, and and that may be the right thing for the for the for the M D for revenue and stuff like that, but I think we should call it what it is. This new policy is a policy for land to be sold, and, um, and obviously, we as council would have the the ability to determine what land is sold, but in my mind, that's way too much power for a council to have, that we can decide what land is environmentally sensitive and not environmentally sensitive. None of us are environmental scientists, none of us have a clue how to go out and count bugs and count, like, like, say, I'm in, I spent most of the night reading all of this stuff last night, and I'm in shock. So I think it needs a complete review with the the new council as it sits, because this is, uh, we might as well just tender the land and sell it and move forward if that's what we think it should be done, but I think that would, anyway, yeah, I've.
John.
Um, I agree, I agree with some of what you said, and part of it is, we've got very few people that benefit from these lands, and it has been for quite a while, that's nobody's fault. But when you see, um, a small restaurant paying ten thousand dollars a year in taxes, and we're subsidizing grazing rates, which we have been for a while, even at twenty-six ten, that is subsidized, because if you look at what our tendered rates are, and if you look what the public rates are, it's well above that. So the only way to consider it non-subsidized is to tender the grazing rates, and this, to me, is exactly what it says, it's a transitional and it's community pastures. So that's how it's laid out here, and it's for that reason, it's for generating revenue, because we're short of revenue, and all we do is nail residential, non-residential every year, and it's getting out of hand. When you're paying ten, fifteen thousand dollars for a small business in the M D of Tabor that doesn't have a lot of access, doesn't have paved road to their place, and yet we're subsidizing these rates, it's just not right, and that's what people are upset with.
I agree totally on the tax issue, on the revenue issue, but we begged the province of Alberta to give this land back to us with the the understanding that we would preserve it as native prairie. So, and and I mean, the document clearly states that if we were going to sell any of this land, you know, I'm I'm reading the letter to Ted Morton, wh- this is back in two thousand nine, that, um, please find attached the memorandum of agreement, and it's a company caveat that will be registered against the title of all tax recovery lands, should any tax recovery land be sold in the future to leaseholders by the M D of Tabor. That says that this land would all get sold with a caveat that says that it can only be grazing lease and grazing land, and I don't think we want to do that, because then that land becomes worth almost nothing, because if, this morning, not even related to our lease prices, I did a quick calculation on what this land is worth to me as a cattleman, based on how much grass there is on the land, and I came to twenty-eight dollars in A U M, and that's taking the current standing grass price, like, if you buy grass standing in a pasture in Southern Alberta, if you take that price and then you multiply that, but you take twenty-five pounds per cow, I don't know how many people run cows in the room, but that's about what a cow eats, and so you take that by a month, that's seven-hundred-and-fifty pounds of feed that a cow eats in a month, then you take that market rate, and that market rate comes to about twenty-eight bucks, okay, so that's the max amount that I could get value out of using a cow. That's if somebody provides that land fenced and watered and everything else. The problem is, is that that's not how we provide it, and so if you're going to provide land, if we wanted to custom lease out this land to leases, where we were providing the fencing, we were taking care of the fencing, all that stuff, the grass itself is worth about twenty-eight bucks, that's what it's worth, in in that's the, and I think that's why we're having this discussion, is because grazing, native prairie land is not a huge economic driver, it just isn't, and and so I'm very tempted to want to irrigate native prairie grass as well, because that changes everything, and irrigation is part of our culture, it's part of the amazing heritage we have in Southern Alberta. I don't think that's what the government, um, had in mind when they transferred this land back to us, though, is that we, if we would have told them, we plan on irrigating this land and breaking this land, this would still be crown lease, and I think we'd be better off if it was, because we wouldn't have the problem of maintaining it and doing all this negotiating and all this stuff, it should have stayed with the province unless we planned to do what was said there, but back then, and I'm not sure, I can't speak for who was on council, but it seems like we wanted it back then because there was oil and gas revenue. There was revenue, but that's now fading on us. Don Johnson, who was one of the guys very big in this, he said to me, this should never be broken, this is amazing land, it's great for the long-term revenue for our M D, and I said, there is no revenue, there's no revenue from this land, why, well, back then there was, it was oil and gas, but now that's fading, so now what do we do with it? But if we promised that, and we haven't written, that we are going to put caveats on all this land, that it can never be broken, I don't know, that changes the whole thing for me. So I don't know, I, like, say, I'm in shock about the whole thing.
There is one sure way to find out, um, what it's worth for grazing, and that's to tender it. That's 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 one sure way to find out, there's no question, it doesn't matter if the guy's right, wrong, his math, he's he's got a better calculator or sharper pencil, doesn't matter, they could, you cash the check. Also, another thing we learned through our council orientation with Brown Lee is that municipality is no different than you, I, or our corporations, in that we have national, natural person powers. That gives us the right to do with what we please on anything that we own, and so this is deeded land, this was never crown land. In documentation we received from the province, it says it was holding it in trust for municipalities. Other municipalities have sold this land and it's been broken, so did they break the rules? And if they did, why'd the province allow them to sell it?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I don't know how that is, but if you were to put that caveat on this land and then tender, then you'll get the price of grassland, because we're not going to tender this land as as lease, as grassland, it all has the option to be purchased, and so it's going to be, it's going to be speculation that's going to determine the price of this this tendering, not grass. There's absolutely no option, anybody that is going to bid on this leased land is going to be speculating that I can own this someday, and that potentially I can break this someday, and potentially I can put a pivot. If we put those caveats on this land, then you would see what a real tender price is, because, and maybe we have that, because maybe we have some long-term leases that are not going to be broken, but when we change all these rules to allow them to be sold, then it's based on speculation.
Martin, and then John.
All right. Well, the M D had their, and or should be with seventy-five years, right, just shortly, we were hurt along pretty good, we had no problems, hassle was good, we had twenty-six million dollars not too long ago, that we discussed that council meeting last one, and all of a sudden we're down to twelve million, we got rid of fourteen million like that. And, uh, with what we're doing, uh, Councilor Takedo said, like, can't keep going to the, can't keep going to the well of the business owners, can't be, well, I did an M D tour here lately, we have to do millions and millions of dollars of road upgrades from businesses that are pharmacies that we get no money from, and we're going after one identity that, when we give them bill, they pay it all the time, they've never argued, they pay their bill every time, we give them bill, they pay it, they fix a fence, they fix it, they've never been a bad tenant. We've progressed to big business in the M D now that does a lot of damage to the road, and we have to update the hamlets, but we can get no money from that. So instead of looking at one identity to try and get our money from, we should be looking at getting our money from everybody, not saying, we got to get it, they haven't paid nothing, they paid whatever we told them. So I strongly disagree that they got a free ride, they got, they paid what they were told to pay, they never got a free ride, that is not right, that is not right to say they got a free ride, they paid what they were told, and when I did the tour of the M D, we had millions of dollars upgrades we got to do, and it was not caused by the cow-calf guy running grass.
John.
I guess, so there's a, there's a missing part to this policy, and that is by the lease, the lease or the current lease or after March first, twenty twenty-six, in the current policy we have, there's a missing, there's a missing part, and that is to trigger a sale, and I think this is the way we should do, and we should approve a policy, we've had it submitted to us in the previous council, a policy that would work very well, that allows the people that hold those leases to be able to trigger a sale, but that sale would be based on a third-party appraiser coming in and appraising the land, that appraisal would be paid for by that current leaseholder. That current leaseholder would then either accept or reject that third-party, an anonymous, uh, appraiser that would only be identified after the appraisal has been done.
Without going out to a bid, you mean?
That's right, and then should they refuse that, then it would go to bid, and then they've they've exhausted their first right of refusal, because that is their first right of refusal, and then that may become the base price for a open tender or auction, and that's what's missing here, but there's also something else missing. So if you're going to generate all this revenue, there's, there's a problem with revenue, it's very easily spent, so there's a subsequent policy, I believe, that needs to be developed as well, and that is to what you do, what you do with the money, where it's earmarked, how much you can pull out of that revenue, I don't think pulling all the interest is the right thing to do either. Otherwise, you can let it, if you allow it to grow, it ends up being similar, similar to land. And I think that's what's missing here, and that would satisfy a lot of the problems that we're seeing with the transitional grazing, as well as the, um, community pastures and cultivated, actually, all the lands that we own.
I can, I can agree with that on, on the cultivated lease, I think it's that simple, there's nothing, it should be appraised, and people should be given the right to, that are have first right of refusal, I agree a hundred percent, but the the grassland is a different, is a different issue altogether, and and. And 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 maybe, maybe we do have enough authority as a, as a council to determine what is environmentally important and what isn't. I don't think we have that knowledge, and I don't think that we have the representation in the room that would protect um one of the the native prairie, and I live surrounded by native prairie. I grew up in native prairie. One of my favorite foods is cactus berries that we pick every year. Most people have no idea what native prairie is about, and and there's very little of it left. But I get hundreds of phone calls every fall from people from all over um Southern Alberta, all the way from Edmonton, Calgary, everywhere to come and be on our native prairie and hunt on our native prairie because there's very little of it left. And and I've broke native prairie as a businessman, but I'm not a businessman in this chair. I've been elected to follow the priorities of the province. And one of the priorities is that was stated in the N V A is to be environmentally responsible. And in these letters, that we, the letters that we use to get this land back from the province, it's clearly stated that we would try to protect that grassland. And so if, I just think we would need something bigger than us to decide whether like in one of the, the very end of one of the lease documents that I read late last night, on the very last page of the one of the, of the current grazing lease, it says that the land um would be, that the M D of Tabor council would determine whether the land was environmentally sensitive. That somehow we have this godlike authority that we would know what is environmentally sensitive, that blows my mind. And these, the one thing, other thing I think that's missing in all of these documents that we've made is there's way too many references to that say the M D council will determine. The M D, I think we need a more clear policy that I don't want to be on the hook out on the street, three weeks after we already allowed somebody else to do something and we changed the policy. Like, we just need to have something that's more structured. I don't want to have to go explain to landowners, well, yes, six months ago we allowed this, but in your case, I don't want to be involved in that. I, if we're going to sell this land, it needs to be something that's structured and fair and it's going to repeat again and again. So I agree with a lot of what you're saying on getting the stuff sold. But I think we need a third-party, somebody bigger than us to determine if there's something that needs to be protected out there.
I'm going Lane, then you, John.
We're at an interesting situation here right now because we've got an asset that's owned by the community. And we need to make some decisions now as to what the long-term benefits are going to be to the community through the wise use of the asset that we have. What we're needing to consider isn't a matter of is it going to generate income or not. We may have a revenue issue, but we're dealing with something that is bigger than a revenue issue. We've got to figure out how we're going to manage the asset that we have access to, control over. And we've got to consider what's going to be best for the long term. Revenue is a short-term issue. And I don't want us to be making decisions based on current revenue needs. If we had access to a huge reserve and all of the assets, all of our infrastructure was in a pristine state, we would still be having this conversation because we've got to make some decisions regarding what we're going to do with that land base. So please separate it from, from a need for revenue. There is a need for us to consider this from all sides. In the end, it's a decision that this council needs to make. I don't want to see us delay this unnecessarily. And that's exactly what's going to happen if we start reaching out to and turning it over to a number of other special interest groups that have, have an interest in the outcome. But we've got to open ourselves up and make sure that there's balanced input that's being received and considered when we're making whatever the final decision is going to be.
John.
So the majority of the grazing lands in the M D of Tabor are provincially held that are crown lands. This, this never, this was crown land prior to it being deeded to uh people that were, broke it and grazed it and then couldn't pay the taxes. And so uh in documentation from the province, it says it was holding it in trust for the municipality. And that's happened in multiple other municipalities, and a lot of those sold it and it's been done with what it, what they needed to do. And so, so us having natural person powers and us representing all of the municipality, not just environmental concerns. One of the things in the M G A, one of the first things is you represent everyone to the best interest of everyone in the municipality. And that is not by not getting what we need out of these lands to help alleviate the taxes. We're not doing justice to this, and there's nothing stopping from, if we don't get this right, I think you will see a plebiscite coming forward that will suggest that we sell it all to the highest bidder. And and that, that could be easily, easily done because it can be, I mean, eight hundred signatures is all you need. And so we have to really be cautious of that as well. Because also in twenty-nine, there could be a, a majority of councillors that are acreage holders that don't really care if there's a graded road beyond their driveway. And so we have to be really cautious of what we do here. That's, that is so important.
Martin.
I do keep hearing that we got to do what's best for the M D. So uh we, there was a survey put out before I was on council and when I read from it, it was, everybody could have their say in it. The consensus of the M D people that responded was they didn't want to change it. In that survey that was put out to everybody in the M D. So to say we're going to get a plebiscite, well, we might get a plebiscite. But there was a survey put out and the majority of people didn't want to change it, according to the survey. That's the M D people speaking, they had a right on that survey to speak. I know it's not law, you don't have to do what they say, but we did put a survey out.
How many, do you have the numbers on the number of people who responded to that survey?
It's, it's on the website, I think approximately a hundred. Please don't take that as God.
No, but that's, I thought it was on the website. I'm just asking if you had a copy of it, I thought it included that number. So about a hundred people responded to the survey.
So everybody had a chance, it wasn't, say you couldn't have a chance. We just had an election. Two hundred people voted on the election, we went with that, we went, the people spoke, right? We didn't say, oh, the majority of the people didn't vote, we can't go with that. We went with people who responded to the question put out.
I a hundred percent agree. I just wanted to know the number of people that responded. Yes, in it, when we take a vote here, it only has to be a majority. So we know what those rules are. We have eighty-two thousand acres of municipally-owned land. Could you please tell me the amount of revenue that was earned from those lands? Not taking into the cost of staff time, but the amount of revenue that we earn from those lands in twenty-twenty-four? Just because we have a final number.
I'll just, I'll just reference the website.
Yeah, that's fine, I, I just want to have it pulled up.
I know it's in this document here. Keep in mind, this is from twenty-twenty-four. Not that the revenues would really change that much from twenty-four to twenty-five. And gives you a breakdown of, I think this is with respect to your question.
Yeah, so in, so this is, the date on this was May twenty-twenty-four, is that what it said up top? I just want to double check. May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
That was the survey that.
Okay, so of our non-tendered fifty-eight thou, so our M D tax recovery and grazing lease, fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty acres that is expiring February twenty-eighth, we earned forty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And the oil and gas revenue was one million and ninety-one dollars and five, one, one million, ninety-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars with a hundred and sixty-four thousand being paid out to leaseholders. Of our grazing leases, which is seventeen thousand and four acres, we earned on the tendered rate thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. And non-tendered, which is fifteen, so that first one I should have read, tendered rate is one thousand, four hundred and sixty acres, earned thirty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. And on the non-tendered acres, which is fifteen thousand, five hundred and forty-four, we earned ten thousand dollars. On the oil and gas revenue, we earned on the tendered one because the leases do not allow it, twenty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-four thousand. And on the non-tendered, one ninety-six, one sixty-three, with a gas payout of, oil and gas payout of one thousand, three hundred and sixty-two. On M D cultivated acres, which is six thousand, one hundred and ninety, our tendered rate, we earned a hundred and seventy-three, I'm just going to round out, thousand. And the revenue was a hundred and twenty-one with none to the leaseholders, non-tendered. Three, and this was four thousand, three hundred and twenty acres, three hundred and twenty, three hundred and ten dollars, oil and gas eighty-one, and irrigated acres, which is a hundred and ten acres, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So although I agree, Lane, that this isn't a, about the cash shortfall, I a hundred percent agree. This never came up because we were looking solely to find a method to provide services to residents. But what it did happen to coincide is that leases were coming due at the end of the month or end of uh February twenty-twenty-six. So I, as a councillor, heard from leaseholders that they wanted to be the masters of their own destiny. That was the word that was used for me time and time again. Some said, we can't buy it outright today, we just don't have, we need a little bit of time. So this lease, and we also heard that community pastures serve a um, a level of service to cowcalf guys and people that isn't available in private leases. So I could see the separation. So we gave people five years who have leases, the option if they wanted to buy. Five years is a fairly reasonable amount of time to get your finances in order. Second, we also gave people they could trigger the sale at any time. But the amount, and then on the community pastures, we never had this in the last uh lease. We never had it so they could renew every ten years. This option now provides that opportunity. So my struggle when we're talking about stewards of the land or whether we're creating revenue for the M D, it would be darn better for us not to own this land to see the strain and the stress that is put on every councillor, every administrative person, every landholder who has a lease. Because the language of every four years, it can change, it can still change every four years. So the amount of effort, when I hear language like, I can't believe it, this makes me sick, this isn't what we're, we've done, the amount of diligence that was set to ensure that we provided an opportunity for leaseholders to manage their own destiny at a rate that was responsible for all residents in the M D of Tabor to provide services would be good. But for the last two years, we haven't done a, hardly a lick. We do have some great things we've done, but we haven't put the effort into roads or figuring out alternative revenue because everything we've done has been based on, how do we manage these lands? Frankly, I'm good to either sell it all or give it away because the stress that it is putting on the municipality isn't worth the return. And shame on me for eighty-two thousand dollars worth, eighty-two thousand acres of land that has this amount of revenue generated. Shame on me for being a councillor who didn't fight harder for better revenue.
I agree a hundred percent. The missing piece that makes this all fall apart is the missing piece you pointed out. If it goes to be bid on by, and but that defines the whole thing, and that is still in this policy, is that if this can be bid on by anybody at market, then there, there is no actual tendering of grass. It is all speculation, it's all based, so that is a huge missing piece if we agree that the right idea is to sell this land. And and I'm, I'm, I'm totally open to that idea. Unless there's some huge moral reason why we need to hang on to a native prairie. And I'm torn on that, I really am torn. Because anyway, as government-elected people, we're not business people anymore. This is different. This is different than just being David the farmer, because David the farmer has plowed up native prairie before. But that isn't my job right now.
So the reason it's not before us is we ran out of time. That's really the reason that we didn't finish this policy off. Because without the previous three policies, that, that, the missing policy, we just didn't have time in the previous council to get that done. We never even had, we never even came up for discussion because we didn't have the time. And that's the only reason it's not here.
All right, I, I am, I think we're missing one thing yet. There's that letter that Hank Van Beers signed that said we weren't going to sell it. So don't we have to decide whether that's a valid letter and whether it's legal to sell it before we even talk about selling it? That's what makes sense to me.
We do have legal opinion.
Okay.
Martin, we'll take, I'll take comments from whoever wants to talk, but at twelve fifteen, we'll take a break or we can take a break right when Martin's done.
Am I missing the column here that we get wherever the income is from? Uh, tax generator from these, or which one is the tax generator from these?
Oh, yeah, so this doesn't have the, the taxes because.
So that's income, so that's not on their revenue. I would just like to compare it to, okay, we're going to, this generate, if we're going to save what revenues generated, it should be everything, including tax. And then I would like to also add one more column, the rest of the farm land that generates how much tax. So we can, I'd like all the information for income. I know like councillor Lane said, it's not a revenue thing, but I'd like to know where we stand at everything. So I'd like to know the tax paid on these, and I would like to know the rest of the farmland. So we're trying to say we generate nothing off these eighty thousand, but I'd like to see what we generate off the rest. I like all the numbers, not just part of the numbers.
Yes, specifically to the, to the lands we own as far as tax revenue, whether we rent it to somebody else that pays the taxes or we don't own it and someone else pays the taxes on it, it's, it's, it's a wash, I guess, as far as that goes. But I'm not, I won't speak to all the other revenues for all, for all the other lands in the M D.
We, we.
I would just like it on here so I could sort out the form pages, the other one. Or I would just like you, you be able to give me all that.
You're wanting to know our agricultural property tax revenue?
Sure.
We do have that.
Eleven percent of our total revenue-ish.
But I guess the question is that the leaseholders that take this, they actually do pay property taxes, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so we do make more off of this land than what we're stating on the sheet. We do collect taxes.
We do, but if, if we didn't own it, we'd collect those same taxes, right? If you owned it, we'd send you the bill rather than send it to the leaseholder.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. But, but it does, but this land does benefit us more than just what we're seeing on this page because it is tax, taxable land. But you're right.
As a municipality, if we owned it and didn't lease it, though, we would pay no taxes.
Okay, uh, it's twelve oh four, I propose we take a lunch break till one P M.
Okay, we will continue with the December 2nd, 25th committee of the whole meeting. So we left off with councilors expressing their thoughts on some of the land management issues. So if you want to continue that or we can go back to admin so they can continue going through the items and then we also have two items in closed session that we need to deal with. So I'll turn it to Arliss if you have anything else admin would like to address on land management strategy and then open to council and then I'll just take your lead.
We've either identified or tried to provide access to the information based on the resolution that council had passed on the November 12 council meeting. So I guess where it was left was I'm not sure where council's at if they want to just continue discussing their perspectives or not, but administration's purpose or aim today was just to simply provide information. Some of it was in open and some of it is enclosed.
All right, so perhaps we should continue on into closed session to deal with those items and then at the end we can have a further conversation however council would like to discuss it. We'll receive that information in closed and then the discussion will happen in open. If you'd like to come back then we can, someone could shoot you a text who has...
No, no harm done. I'm going to vote opposed to the...
Lunch break? Oh, too late.
I'm going to vote you're going to oppose. That's good.
Four more years, four more years you can get here. All right, Kate.
Well, I mean, a lot of pressure.
Well, we're going to ask, so there's two items enclosed, so I'm going to read out both of them. Closed session pursuant to section 197 sub 2 of the MGA, section 21, 23, div 2, part one of the ATIA, Advice from Officials and Privileged Information, 23 in the Land Management Strategy Project Summary Attachment E. The second item follows the same items, but disclosure harmful to business interests of a third party, section 20, advice to officials, 21, and privileged information, 23, on land management matters. Henry, would you, does someone have your text that we can phone you, text you when we're out of closed? If you'd like to return? I have no idea. Well, there's 160 pages of information, so it'll be longer than 10 minutes. So, yes, thank you. Okay, so a motion to move into closed.
We do have a call.
Okay, Councilor Tricado, those in favor? One or...
Motion to come out of closed.
At two thirty six, motion to come out of closed, those in favor.
We are out of closed. Okay, is there any further discussion from the items in closed? Or anything else that you would like to ask based on the agenda that's in front of you? Lade?
So just so it's clear, we're continuing the discussion on December ninth, which is the next committee of the whole meeting. And we're going to continue moving along with the purpose for these committee of the whole meetings on gathering information.
And potentially discussing policy options and.
Can I ask a question? Can a resolution be done in a committee as a whole? It's like so at the next one, we may make some resolutions that would then push it to council meeting or something.
It's just our recommendation to council.
Okay.
Yeah, we can even at the next committee of the whole, we could even provide like an example. Specific to the land management policies, we could show some examples of how council or committee of the whole through resolutions has provided direction to administration to develop those policies. We can show you an example just to give you a bit more context, I think that might be helpful.
So Arlis, based on timing. So our firm meetings. So we have December second committee of the, so December ninth committee of the whole. We have attended at the tenth.
And then the tenth if needed, so I guess we'll have to determine that.
Okay, and then the sixteenth is a council meeting now that council meeting. Is that adequate time since we've already passed our budget, we should be good on that.
That's where the budget will come.
Yeah, because the interim, yeah, it's the recommendation to council. So are you feeling like we're on track for the amount of meetings? Are you thinking we're gonna end up having to call another meeting of council before the end of the year? And I do that because everyone's schedules are really getting harder in December.
I don't, I don't anticipate another council meeting. The only other council meeting is the joint council meeting on the, is it the ninth as well?
The ninth.
Joint council meeting with the other three municipalities. And Taboran District Housing Foundation.
Okay, that's good, we just wanted to make sure.
So do you think we will go on the ninth and the tenth or we'll just, we'll see on the ninth how that goes?
Yeah, say so, we would use the same agenda topics. Like if, if you decide you want to go on the tenth, we would just use the same agenda topics.
Yeah.
Established on the ninth.
And I think maybe on the ninth, we decide at one o'clock, do we just power through and have a long day? Oh, we can't have a long day because we have a. So maybe we'll, we have the housing people coming with the joint council. So we. Three thirty, three thirty, and then we have someone who has to leave at four thirty. So perhaps that day folks, we could plan for a half hour lunch just to give us a little bit more time. And we'll go from there. All right. Okay, anything else on committee of the whole? If not, we've covered everything, so Arlis? Do you have something else?
No.
Okay. So and just so that and since it's tape, maybe one person will watch and come. We have coffee with council on Thursday, the eleventh. At or Thursday, the fourth here, I'm messing that up. Thursday, the fourth at seven o'clock at the operations building. All council is invited if you can attend and it's a very informal, have a donut and a drink and visit with whoever's there. We have no set agenda, it's just an open discussion. All right. There's nothing else, then the final motion.
I move.